All right, we're going to get started now. Good evening, welcome to the November 13th zoning board of adjustment meeting. I'm going to make some quick introductions and then we're going to stop for a minute. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who's a deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across, we have Ms. Kathy Vitale, Mr. Steve Lionel, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Jack Curry, who serves as our vice president, Ms. Stavia Boras, Ms. Marion McKay, who serves as the secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, who serves as your chair. Before we get started, I'd like to hand over the floor to Mr. Shaw for a few moments.
We're just going to take a moment of silence. I wanted to note that I think probably almost everybody in the city by now knows that Alderman at large, and president of the board of Alderman, Brian McCarthy, passed away a little over a week ago, and he actually started his career with serving the city on this zoning board some 27 years or so ago. And also Ms. Vitale and I had the pleasure of serving with him on the board of Alderman. And Alderman McCarthy also had quite a bit to do with our land use code and many of the revisions and spearheaded much of the work that was done. So we have a great loss for the city, and I just, we wanted to take a moment, just pause and respect that loss for the city.
Thank you very much. This meeting tonight is recorded by a written transcript, is also video recorded. We'd ask you that please direct all testimony to the microphone, and only one person speak at a time, please. If you don't have tonight's agenda, you'll find it on the back table, the back of the room. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for both deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. Excuse me, just variances tonight, so what I'll do is I'll just go over the variance So a variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established to approve a variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interest, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, there's a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest a decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the city of Nashua planning department within 30 calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is called the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. Order of testimony is as follows. The applicant will have 15 minutes to present their case, then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify, then those in opposition or with questions will also have a limit of five minutes each to testify, and then the applicant then has five minutes to speak in rebuttal, and then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We'll ask you that, again, we please direct all testimony to this board and not to the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered for you. The second part of the public meeting is where this board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during this public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We'd ask that you please silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we'd ask you to step out in the hallway. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, there are not.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before we begin?
But one.
Yes.
The variances and the decisions made, does that happen this evening or at some later date?
Yeah, so the first, and I know I went over quickly, but we'll walk you through it. Again, the first part of the hearing is a public meeting where you come and testify, we ask questions, then I close the public meeting. You stay here and you can observe, you know, people usually observe, and then we have a public hearing. That is where we debate amongst ourselves. Again, this is only a meeting where, part of the meeting where there's no input from the audience. At that point, everybody's had their chance to speak. We'll make a decision, one way or another, or we may continue it to another case, but you'll know tonight how that ends up. Okay? Any other questions in the audience? Okay, seeing none, there are...
Mr. Chair, just, I think mostly out of context, because it wouldn't be on the audio, but basically, the question had been regarding, would the cases get resolved tonight?
Right.
Like I said, I think your answer probably mostly would give it away, but since his question wouldn't have necessarily made it on the audio, I just wanted to have that kind of just in the recording, that's all. So I think it's, I just, by noting that, I think we're fine.
All right, so the member in the audience just asked whether or not decisions are made this evening, and I just kind of explained that, yes, there'll be a decision one way or the other, or a move to push the case off to another certain date, so...
They don't have to wait for 30 days, right?
Right. So we'll explain when it's, after the decision is made, I'll explain to you what that means when it's done, okay? So tonight, we have a full board, five members, so there are two alternate members sitting tonight. Unless one of these members recues themselves, we will alternate between Ms. Boras and Ms. Vitale. Other than that, they will participate in both the public hearing, the public meeting, but when it comes time to vote, then the five full-time members, which is Mr. Lionel, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Curry, Ms. Boras, and Mr. Boucher, will vote on those.
Ms. McKay.
Ms. McKay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. McKay, I'm sorry. Ms. McKay will be the voting members, and I apologize, Ms. Boras. All right, so with that, I will call case number one and read that into the record. Case number one is for Christopher D. and Lynn M. Morrow of 8 Bryant Road, Sheeby Lot 653, requesting a variance from land use code, section 190-192, session C, to see maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 24 feet existing, an extra eight feet six inches proposed for a total width of 32 feet six inches. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 8. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Come on up. Please state your name and address in the microphone, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name's Chris Morrow. I live at 8 Bryant Road here in Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. I'm case number one, I guess. So I'm here this evening to appeal to you to allow us to basically create some additional parking space off-street that will ultimately allow my family of four to maintain our ability to park our vehicles in our, on our private property and keep them off of street side. Going through the proposal with regards to granting of the requested variance not being contrary to the public interest, it's my belief that with regards to the current dirt area that I use for one of my vehicles, this proposed improvement will allow me to take over that area and basically create a situation that's more attractive, increase curb appeal for the property and the surrounding neighbors. With regards to observing the spirit of the ordinance, granting of this variance will effectively claim this dirt area previously used for overflow parking on my property. This project will improve the landscaping between myself and my immediate neighbor. It will also increase the curb appeal of the property, and by gaining this space, it'll alleviate any regular congestion or the need to park street side on a daily basis. I will, I will have to admit that there is some reoccurring theme here, but effectively, these are the primary points that I'm, you know, I'm looking to accomplish. As far as item number three, you know, justice would be done to me, the property owner, by granting this variance, in my opinion. The existing driveway and dirt parking area that allow my immediate family, my two children, both of whom are of age and have vehicles, my wife and myself, who also each have a single vehicle, so we are a four-vehicle family. The approval of this variance will allow us to continue to park off-street. We also have elderly family, both my parents and my wife's parents, who are frequent flyers in terms of their visiting. I would say one to two weeks every month, pretty much without exaggeration, we have one or both sets of parents visiting us. That gets us to six vehicles on a regular basis, and as you can imagine, we have street-side vehicles quite often, even overnight at times through necessity, even utilizing my current dirt spot. Basically, the dirt spot that I keep mentioning has basically just come to be over time. The need to keep my vehicles off the street has led me to kind of continue to put an automobile in that spot, and over time, it's kind of claimed that area, as you would imagine. As far as number four is concerned, you know, being concerned about diminishing the values of surrounding properties, again, it's my belief that just the opposite, my proposed project is going to increase curb appeal, it's going to better the area between myself and my immediate neighbor. In addition to that, again, it increases the landscaping, which I just mentioned, and gets my cars off property. To that end, I also identified with the help of your front office, the neighbors that would be contacted with regards to your concerns and their concerns over this proposed project. I took the time to talk personally with each and every one of those neighbors, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, as part of your package, I had created a signature sheet that basically just shows you that, you know, I did speak with these folks, I gave them the opportunity to ask me questions. I actually walked a couple of them up to the property, across the street, showed them what I was planning on doing. And in the end, those particular neighbors that were notified by your board, none of them had any concerns. They were all very supportive of what I was doing. The neighbor that was most significantly impacted is my immediate neighbor, and you can see from some of the photographs, some of the landscaping improvements that I've already started making with their approvals, trying to beautify the area, increase the curb appeal, get rid of some scrub brush that's been growing there for years now that is fairly unattractive to both them and myself. So item number four, I feel, you know, I think, I'm taking this in a positive direction, not a negative one. Lastly, item number five, the literal enforcement of the ordinance, and whether or not I will be incurred with a hardship if you choose not to approve my project. I guess what I have to say is that I'm forced to utilize some other means to park my vehicles. I have approximately 34 feet from my garage door to the edge of the street. A few years ago, I bought a new vehicle, I bought a pickup truck. The pickup truck's 22 feet long, or just short thereof, and when I park that vehicle in the driveway, I do not have room behind it to park a second vehicle without the rear bumper being out into the street. So that's what ultimately forced me to start to kind of put the truck in the dirt. It claimed that dirt spot over time, and if I don't have the opportunity to improve my driveway and claim this additional parking square footage, I'm going to be, you know, forced to continue to try to find some alternate means to park the vehicle. So I'm here this evening to appeal to you. I really want to, you know, move in the right direction. I want to do this legally, I want to do this via permit, and your help would allow me to continue to park my vehicles off-street, limit curbside concerns and issues, and ultimately improve the curb appeal of my property. So that's my appeal to you.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Vitale?
Can you tell me if you, you added the proposed extension to your driveway, how close is that to the property line at that point?
It is approximately three feet.
Would be three feet from the property line?
Approximately, yes. The fence, according to the GIS that I take a look at in the office, the fence is a little over two feet on my property line, and the edge of this driveway will be about 18 inches inside the fence, so it would be about three and a half feet, actually.
Okay. And I know that you would park things over on the other side of the house, like around the corner?
Yes.
Would you be continuing to do that?
Likely is the true statement there, yes. Because that, keep in mind that this particular request is helping me park my drivable vehicles. What you saw around the other corner via satellite was a camper, so that's a towable vehicle, and that wouldn't fit. That's more than 34 feet long, so I'd be out in the street with that if I tried to put it on the paved drive.
I didn't know how long that was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lionel?
Do you park any cars in your garage? You have two-car garage.
At times, I do, in inclement weather, yes. I do not use the garage regularly. My truck doesn't fit. It's a, it's an older home. I don't know if you can tell by the photographs, but the header across those overhead doors is at about 6'2". I can barely walk through there without ducking, so I can put my sedans in the garage if I choose, the truck will not fit.
Now, what many people do when they wanted to do something like you're suggesting is rather than extend a driveway all the way to the street, is they basically create a parking pad that you pull into your normal driveway and then pull off.
Yep.
And that doesn't require a variance.
I can't...
Have you considered that?
I have, and I looked at it. I can't get inside the eight feet, so what I was told was the right-of-way was approximately eight feet off of the roadside.
Yes, that's...
And if I go inside of eight feet, I can't get, without going right angles, you know what I mean? If I try to get in there and get up there, the head end of that parking space gets into the corner of my garage. I also have a gate access to my backyard right there. It's the only access to my backyard that I have. The fence goes all the way around. I would lose that gate access, and I would have to further the construction and restart doing some fence rework to get backyard access.
I...
Let me see, let me see if there's a picture.
That doesn't follow, but...
Yep, let me see if there's a picture that helps.
Well, I see your gate, but the...
Right, so right in front of, if you look at the photograph that has the bushes removed, there's one photograph that shows the proposed space with the bushes and one without.
Right.
If you look at the one without, you can see the gate right there, so if you take that proposed eight to 10 feet and you push that up towards the corner of my garage, I lose the access to my backyard.
I wasn't suggesting that.
No, understood, but to get, to get up beyond the eight-foot right-of-way and then get that extra pad off to the right, beyond the eight feet, if I'm misunderstanding you, please help me.
Well, you're proposing paving into the right-of-way anyway.
Um, yes. I don't, I don't understand you, sir.
Tell a picture here of the one with the bushes removed, would that maybe help you?
No, I, I see it, and I went by the property and looked at it. I was just, awful lot of vehicles parked in the yard.
Yes, I have four vehicles there.
Well, four, and you have room for four, you've got your camper, and you're talking about another one here.
So I have, I don't have room for four, I'm sorry, that's why I'm here tonight. With my, with my pickup truck, I cannot put four vehicles in my driveway. I can only put three currently.
That's all for me.
Any other questions?
I just, it's maybe more of a question for Mr. Fark, so, I mean, kind of, it's a follow-up on that. Even if, even if the applicant were to not have the driveway at the curb at the full width, I thought the whole definition, also of driveway width, then it's, I forget how far back it is from the property line, but it seems to me that they might not be able to satisfy, we might end up with a different variance, even if we were able to do what Mr. Lionel was suggesting, I was just trying to see if I could understand that.
I believe I understand what Mr. Lionel was asking about. The driveway width has to be no wider than 24 feet for the entire front yard setback. So the front yard setback in the R9 zone is 20 feet back. So 20 feet back, that's going to put the driveway, where it could start fanning out to be bigger, that's going to be pretty close to the garage doors.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the rules there.
So 20 feet back from property line, yeah, brings it to 14 feet.
And parking spaces...
No, it actually brings it to 22, or brings it to...
Well, he's got...
Yeah, so, so if you go back 20 feet from this property line...
If you go back 20 feet from that right-of-way.
No, I, I agree that that's, that's not...
That's the right-of-way, right-of-way from here, so that's eight feet, so he's got about 26 feet, so...
It's almost six feet.
Well, if that's the garage back here, he's got, the drawing shows a right-of-way from the, there's eight feet of lawn or swale area, and then from the property line to the structure, it's about, well, 34 minus eight, it's about 26 feet. 20 feet of that would have to be not widened more than the 24 feet, so there would be just a little bit of a space, it wouldn't be enough for a vehicle to pull up.
I agree. Now, I guess what I've been seeing people do is not actually in agreement with the ordinances, so, okay.
And driveways, there's no side yard setback on driveways, I mean, they can go right up to the property line, or, we always tell people to put it in a foot or two so they're not going onto their neighbor's property with opening their door or anything.
Mr. Shaw.
So, are you aware of any other of your neighbors, and that can be not just a very immediate, but just in the general, you know, vicinity, of anybody else having the extra wide driveway?
There are a couple, yes. Yes, I don't, I do not have their addresses, but yes, there are a handful.
Okay, thank you.
I was just driving around, I ended up on Emerson. There was a house on Emerson that's got hugely wide driveway, right, but kind of, but by the crow flies, it's not far, but it's completely on another street.
Yeah, yeah, so there, I don't think there's anything in the properties that I've, you've identified here, but you go one block in any direction and there's a handful, yeah.
Mr. Curry.
Just wondering on the idea of, you know, exploring options to potentially avoid a variance. You mentioned your header board was like six feet two inches. I didn't know if you would explore the idea of just taller doors, you know, a taller front wall, taller doors, and would that open up for any, you know, even large-sized vehicle to, you know, regular use in a garage?
So I've considered that, but not to the point where I've gone out and explored a contractor's price. If you actually look at the, this particular garage, unfortunately, has turned 90 degrees, so the pitch goes to the driveway, so in order to get a higher header height on the overhead door, the whole, the entire roof actually has to raise up, or I have to create a full-size dormer across the entire structure. That would be cost prohibitive for me, I would not be able to do that. So I have, in fact, thought about other things. This is the most affordable, economic, and least impactful, I think, of the options to get more vehicles on, in my, on my property.
I'm not a contractor, but I would have guessed a wall and a roof with less pitch would be about equivalent of what that asphalt at four to six inches deep is going to be, but it's just a thought.
No, it's a significant difference, for sure, yeah.
All right, I was, just wanted to explore that.
Any other questions? Okay, we're all, for now.
Okay, thank you.
So before I move on, I just want to read in the record that there was a signature sheet that the applicant had, came around with his neighbors, and I'll just read off the addresses that were in approval of this, of this application. It's 5 Bryant Road, 6 Bryant Road, 7 Bryant Road, 15 Maple Leaf Drive, 16 Maple Leaf Drive, 18 Maple Leaf Drive, and 4 Sprucewood Ave. And those, if you looked at the map, would be all the director butters, side behind and in front. Okay. Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody in the audience like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Curry.
Well, I guess, I, you know, I think of the basic task. We look at the hardship on the land, and in my mind, perhaps, perhaps there's an argument, look to my colleagues to discuss this one way or the other, perhaps there's an argument to say that, you know, there's not another option to keep the driveway the same and extend it in the back because of the situation of the house and the length of the driveway. You know, when we were talking about what Mr. Lionel brought up, which was, you know, the, say, the possibility of not going for a variance but still getting a parking spot just by kind of moving it back, you know, there's not enough space, so, you know, but I don't know off the top of my head, maybe every house in the neighborhood is the exact same situation, so there's nothing unique to this. I guess I didn't think about that when I took a drive around the neighborhood, but, you know, the fact that there's no opposition to it is certainly interesting that we have that, because usually that isn't the case, and maybe, and, you know, you could argue that it's not out of character of the neighborhood to do it, so, kind of on the fence, and I'm looking to hear some other opinions.
Okay. Ms. Vitale?
Normally, I don't, I don't like widening the driveway like this from the street all the way back. You know, I'm looking at it as, is there any alternatives for the immediate family? We all have company, and they have to park somewhere else sometimes. They do have the ability to have two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway currently, as it stands. Might mean that they have to move it around, but that's no different than apartments that we, that we approve, and they might have to move a car to have somebody else leave or do some advanced planning to, to move it. If they do park another, you know, something else else around the corner that's in the yard, so there, there's a lot of vehicle-looking type things right there. I think it's a plus that he's gone around and the neighbors are all in approval of it. He can't, there is the room there, and he can go right up, right up to the property line since it is a driveway. He can't, there is the room there and he can go right up, right up to the, the property line since it is a driveway. You know, whether it's a hardship to move the cars, you know, as people come and go during the day, that, that seems to me the, the main hardship of this is, is whether it's a hardship to have to move the vehicles. If the parks the truck outside all the time anyhow because of the length of the truck and the height, that's usable. It's, it's whether it's a hardship to use the garages and the, and the driveway itself. That seems to me the, the hardship. They do live on a corner, so you can look at the fact that if they're parking out on the street, you know, where do they park and the sightlines, but there was no testimony regarding sightlines out on the street being a corner and people parking on the street, so I wouldn't even, I don't think I'd even look at that, but sometimes that's what we hear about a corner property, you know, people parking too close to the corner. But in my mind, the hardship is whether the garage and the driveway and having four vehicles is a hardship enough to have the, the additional space on the driveway.
Okay, thank you. So again, I, you know, I'll start off that I find it very credible that, that every single neighbor that directly comes into contact with this piece of property has, has, you know, has, is in favor of this. So that, to me, helps in a long way. As we're talking about hardship, you know, I, I think that as I look at property, as I drove by, I looked at it, you know, trying to understand what's going on, and, and it's very clear, you know, where the parking's been going on. I, I look at that as, you know, if that garage had been converted into living space, and it's not really a garage that gets used, and, you know, we all, I, I think that when we look at, I think that when we have applicants that come for, in front of us and need certain parking, you know, again, they'll, they'll present that as, as a case, but that's mostly a lot of, I think, apartment buildings and condominiums and stuff like that. But in this case, what I find as part of hardship is that, you know, again, it's deceiving when you look at the property, because eight feet from the road is, is, is city property, it's right of way. And if we, if we go back again, you know, to me, the hardship could be that I can't get the turn-in where it should be. And it would be six feet, the, the turn or the, the, the beginning of the turn would be at six feet from the garage. So, and, and again, you know, it doesn't really make sense to start parking cars in front of the house, I mean, because I think that would just detract from the neighborhood. So I, I think there's some, in some respects, I, I think I look at that as maybe some of the, the barrier there. Again, I think it weighs very heavily for me that, that again, there's absolutely no opposite, opposition from any of the neighbors. And again, yes, in this particular block, there's not really extra wide driveways, but as I drove around, then I, I know I see, I see that, and I think it's just the nature of kind of that neighborhood, it's some of the bigger homes, and I think exactly what it is. It's families, not like it was twenty, twenty-five years ago, I think there's more vehicles, you know, kids that have cars, and, so I think it's all part, part of that, so. So that's my opinion on that, so I, I, I guess I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not against that, this. I, I think that, I guess I'd rather see driveway there than, than a mud parking space, you know? And again, I think that it's situated to, on a property where it's kind of on the side, kind of, kind of looks like, I think when the driveway gets done, you know, it's almost like maybe it's, it could be one of those ones that look like it's, belongs there, so. But again, I don't know, it's my opinion, and anybody else like to offer? Ms. McCaffrey?
I concur with your opinion, and I also like the idea of it not being in the winter with snow, being a mud or snow issue. If it has the asphalt, it might, I don't know, the drainage might be better, I'm not really sure. I'm not an engineer, that's not what I do. It's just aesthetically, I think it would probably present better, and I don't have any objection to this at all. And again, every neighbor supported it.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I pretty much concur with what you said, Mr. Boucher, as far as the support of the neighbors, and I think especially, I mean, to ultimately achieve some additional parking, the configuration between the, what is relatively short driveway that's part of the property, and we've talked a lot about the additional eight feet that's actually still part of city right of way. So there is, there's no practical way to get the additional parking without increasing driveway width, and you could even go a step further if, you know, especially since this is a corner lot, if there, you know, if the applicant had wanted to consider doing something on the actual Bryant Road side of things. The problem we'd still run into is that even to put an eight-foot wide driveway over there, you really need to maintain a twenty-four-foot wide driveway because of a two-car garage and servicing that, so. I don't, I just think, you know, ultimately, there's, there's the hardship in the sense of, I don't believe there is any practical way to add additional parking to the property without having some relief on the driveway width.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would you like to make a motion, or would you like me to make a motion?
I'm just, I, so it's going to be the five full members?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, just wanted to clarify.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Christopher and Lynn Moreau of Eight Bryant Road. Description is Christopher D. and Lynn M. Moreau, owners of Eight Bryant Road, Sheet B Lot 653, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-192, Section C, to exceed the maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, twenty-four feet existing, an extra eight feet, six inches proposed for a total width of thirty-two feet, six inches. It's in the R nine zoning district. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We spoke about the fact that, that there is a eight-foot section of right of way before the driveway, before the property line, which leaves only twenty-six feet, and that to, to fall within the guidelines, we find that it would be almost nearly impossible to, without a driveway being widened, to be able to add additional parking. There was some talk about that the fact that this is a corner lot and that, you know, there's obviously another street that the driveway could have been put on, but again, we would be looking at a variance to achieve the additional parking that, that's being sought. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible, as just discussed, for the applicant to pursue, other than area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Find it will not adversely affect the property values or surrounding parcels. Find that it's not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice will be served. Seconded by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, that's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir, your, the motion passes?
Very much for your consideration.
All right, so just be aware, there is a thirty-day window of appeal, but proceed at your caution. Okay, if you need more information on that, please call Mr. Fox with the, of the City Department, he can help you out, okay?
Thank you, sir. Visit the office tomorrow morning for the variance. I'm going to need to go to TPW and obtain the permit, he's going to ask me to get the variance.
Right.
I'm going to obtain that at the office tomorrow morning.
We'll have an approval letter for you by noon time tomorrow, and you can just take a copy of that to the Street Department. They'll, they'll, they'll have to give you the street opening permit to widen from twenty-four to like thirty-two.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll place, I'll close case number one and open case number two. Case number two is, I apologize for pronunciation, Nash... Nashwood Dome LLC, applicant's by Low Signs, 99 Northeastern Boulevard. Description is Nashwood Dome LLC, owner, Low Signs, applicant, 99 Northeastern Boulevard, Sheet 140, Lot 46, requesting the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-108, Section C, Subsection 3, to exceed maximum sign area, ninety-two point seven square feet permitted, seventy-three point two six square feet issued from signed permit dated ten, five, eighteen, a total of one hundred forty-four point three square feet proposed, and two, from Land Use Code Section 190-108, Section E, Subsection 2, to exceed maximum number of wall signs. Two issued from signed permit dated ten, fifteen, eighteen. Three permitted, a total of four wa, four wall signs proposed. It's in the P.I. district. Come on up and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Michael Brewster, I'm with Barlow Signs, and I'm here for the Nashwood Dome LLC, Boston Pie Domino's Pizza Theater, thirty-two oh seven at 99 Northeastern Boulevard. We are seeking the variance for, we call them four-wall, they're being called four-wall signs. The two wall signs that are internally illuminated have been approved by permit. The two remaining in question are non-illuminated flat cutouts that are part of the Domino's corporate standards that they have redone, so they don't illuminate internally. However, what the, as far as the public interest goes, that's kind of where we stand with that. It's, they're in scale with the building, the building's going to be remodeled. They're removing the existing warehouse and remodeling the fascia of the existing building, adding some parking spaces, and bringing that building cleaner and up to a, a better look from where it's been over the, the last twenty years, but I remember that being open. And like I said, these do not illuminate internally, so there's not additional internal illuminated signage. As far as the spirit of the ordinance goes, it does, the additional wall signage isn't going to alter the character of the neighborhood. Domino's sits on a corner lot right now with Northeastern and Progress, or Pittsburgh, I'm sorry, Pittsburgh Ave. We're looking to have signage on the North, Northeastern Boulevard as well as Pittsburgh Ave elevation. So it's two actual completely different elevations, two signs per elevation. It, these signs, although the main sign says Domino's, the ones in question are part of their new marketing that explain their brand and the changes they've made in the services they offer. Substantial justice would be done to the property man, or the property owner, because it'll help identify Domino's and their new image that they've gone for. The, uh, it's, the new rebranding was a big thing for Domino's. They spent a lot of money in their marketing campaign to figure out what's going to get them, because they were faltering there for a while, and this tended to be the best way. And with the number of locations we've done with Domino's, they've done really well, and they look really good as well. Actually, we just did one across the bridge in Hudson with the same layout of signage. It won't diminish the value of the, of surrounding properties, in our opinion. One, because the, the existing property is going to be remodeled, and that tends to always help with property values. It's, they're going to remove the kind of derelict warehouse that's been there for a while, redo the, the front of the, all the elevations of the building, put some new landscaping in. Actually, they're going to have an outdoor sitting area as well. These signs are just on the wall, and they're, they're only about three-quarters of an inch thick, so you don't even really, you see them from the road, you see them as you walk up, but they don't stand out. They don't stick out to you. If, we believe that as far as condition five, having an unnecessary hardship, as I was stating earlier, Domino's has spent a lot of money in their rebranding and remarketing over the last few years, and these two elements that were, that are in question are their two biggest things they've redone that have been bringing the business back in for them. And like I said, that, the ones we've done, they're very tasteful, they look really well. Like, they're not internally illuminated, and they seem to help bring the business in for, for Domino's. That's where we're at with the variance in our request. There was a misunderstanding, just to bring it up, there was a misunderstanding about building frontage. We believed that because there was two frontages, that you were allowed to calculate the frontage of each road. And apparently, the way the Land, uh, Land Use Code reads, you're only allowed to calculate the frontage based on the actual physical address of the property, which is what ended up pushing us into this variance meeting for the square footage portion of it. We would have been here no matter what, because we're still requesting that fourth sign. That's...
Good?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Lionel.
Although these signs are not internally illuminated, your renderings show that they are externally illuminated.
Yes, the, it appears that the architect, when he did the original renderings, has gooseneck lighting, very similar to what they did in Hudson. It's not a in-your-face light, they do have them over the FCOs, but yes, there is external illumination, actually along the whole building, I believe. So it's not specific to the signs, they're actually, we're trying to light the entire length of the building.
It's all permitted.
That's all.
It's all permitted, okay, good. Mr. Shaw.
I just, I'm pretty sure I followed it, but I just want to make sure I asked you, because, so as I take it, it's the items A and B, which are basically the Domino and the Domino's words, those letters. That's what's internally illuminated.
That is correct.
And then the items C and D are the three-quarter inch or so thick, wall-mounted signs.
Correct.
That have no lighting specifically associated with it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Curry.
To your point about, you know, the signage needed for the area that it's in, I mean, in my mind, you know, coming from Exit Four, you know, this is really a park industrial area.
Yes.
It's not an Amherst Street. You know, so you've got the, the Amphenol, the old Terradyne Building, that's set back. You know, the old, I think it was a welding supply that then became a RC place, and you have TJ's Deli, and the land slopes up heading to Domino's. So coming from the south, your building is, is up front, very predominant, very well-standing out, and the fact that it's, it is a park industrial area, you know, the signages for the buildings that are there are, are really scaled back for what the park industrial signage is. So I'm just saying, in my opinion, there's a very broad view of Domino's coming from the, coming from Exit Four, and coming from Exit Five, you know, there's a few more buildings that are up close, but it's still a very good preview for the passing traffic.
I think Exit Five, it's got, the, there's more buildings forward. They're not moving the building, right now, if you got, when, if you're looking at the building, the part that juts out is actually warehouse space, it's not Domino's. So when they do this remodel, that part's actually going to be gone. So they're, they're losing that section of the building that you typically would see coming from the Exit Five section. They're losing that part of the building. So that actually sets, it'll actually be set back, further back because of that.
So I guess, so, one of the thoughts, and I, I also put this out for my colleagues, I welcome them to comment on it, but in my opinion, anyway, that the corporate requirements, there's a business with a corporate requirement of signage or a corporate preference, as the case may or may not be. I don't believe that falls under a hardship on the land. I mean, I feel it doesn't, but, you know, I invite anybody to comment on that, because I, I guess I haven't, nor have I ever. But it's just a point I want to throw out that, you know, with the, the advertisements for the different sort of, you know, the hundred percent real dough, et cetera, you know, I'm, I guess I'm asking my colleagues to help me see if there's hardship in that request as we kind of deliberate on this. It's not really maybe a question for you, just, just a comment to the folks as I, we go about this discussion.
Mr. Fox.
Well, that's true, Mr. Courier. Most, all corporate or national businesses have prototypical signage and logos and color schemes and fonts and things like that. But I also believe that they all can, they can try to make their signs size-wise match what municip, what municipality...
Yeah.
Municipalities have for sign requirements, so, you know, if our code is a certain size, you know, they usually have proto- prototypical signs that can meet that or match that. Occasionally, we have some, you know, some businesses here for variances as well, so.
Alright, thanks.
Mr. Shaw?
I guess I will kind of, as a follow-up to Mr. Curry's question, I'll put it to the applicant. I guess, I'm, I am struggling also, because in the sense of at least, especially as far as the fourth sign. I mean, I clearly get it with the actual logo and the, you know, the Domino's letters and all that. That is, I expect something that Domino's will maintain for quite a long time, maybe there'll be some future rebranding. But, you know, these other signs, to me, they seem like the kind of nice-to-have marketing things that are being, you know, highlighted right now, and you noted, it's part of maybe is what they believe has helped make them recently, you know, more successful, et cetera. But I guess I'm struggling with how that's really necessary versus kind of truly what I was thinking of is, it seems like a nice-to-have. So if you could comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things from the franchisee for Domino's that we're doing, that we're working with here, he brought up is that, like I'd said before, for a while, Domino's was faltering, competing with the other pizza markets out there. They spent a lot of money and a lot of time in their rebranding. And these two very specific items, it's not like it's the catchphrase of the week, I guess we could say. When we install these, they're not installed to be temporary, you know, be temporary signs, to be able to be removed, because the next best thing's gonna come up. These are like set with Domino's and to the point where they actually incorporate them into their most recent corporate standards. It, it actually is part of their new corporate standards for all their stores, to put these signs up. So like to go back on that, I don't think it's something temporary, like a niche thing, where they're like, oh, let's try this for a while and see how it works. When they're installed, they're installed in a permanent manner and, well, nothing's permanent, but they're not installed in a, in a couple of weeks, we're gonna remove it and put something else up. And it has really done great for their business, all the buildings that they've done this, these pizza theaters in. 'Cause they're trying to get away from, I guess, just being a pizza store. They're, they're branding themselves as a pizza theater. You can, you know, and that's, this is part of that experience.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lionel?
Normally, when people come for us for sign variances, it's because they want people to be able to find the business. And what we're looking at here are simply promotional signs and lots of them. Now, the, yes, it's a corner lot, but one of the streets that it's a corner on is, is one that really gets no retail traffic. Doesn't, I don't really see a point of, of putting signs there. I'm having trouble with the number and, and size of the signs that are just, are strictly promotional in nature. Corporate rebranding or no, cynic in me might say maybe they should improve their pizza instead, but the, we don't normally approve extra signs like this, at least in my short tenure on the building. That's what I, it's, it's not really a question to you, but I, I'm, I'm struggling with it.
Ms. Vitale?
You probably can't speak to this because you're the sign company and not, not the, the owner.
Right. I, I will try, though.
If it wasn't approved, how would they convey what the corporate, corporate would like to have to convey that information?
I can't, I, I really can't answer that, 'cause I'm not Boston Pie. But, I mean, I'm sure there's other, you know, there's ways it can be looked at. But I really wouldn't be able to give you a, a good answer with that, 'cause I, I don't work for corporate.
Second question, to, to convey everything that you're told as a sign company to get the information across for Domino's and this thing, can you do it within the city, the city recommended total square feet?
Um, I believe what they are saying we're allowed is ninety-two point seven. Um, 'cause like I said earlier, apparently you can't use both frontages, even though it's two separate roads. Um, so we're using the Northeastern Boulevard, which allows us ninety-two point seven, we have seventy-four. It might be close, I'd, and again, I wouldn't be able to really answer that without having a conversation with Domino's themselves. It's possible to re- if, if we're, if you're asking is it possible to resize, it would really depend on the client. Uh, the ability to, to what, how small they could get. And then at what point does it get too small where they're not, no longer legible?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do, one further question.
Mm-hmm.
So the, you, if you just had three signs and you were within the, the square footage, then you wouldn't need to be before us, right?
That is correct.
And the reason that you're asking for four signs is you want two on, on two, each of two sides of the building?
Correct, two on the Pittsburgh Ave and two on Northeastern Boulevard.
So if perhaps dropped one of the ones on Pittsburgh Avenue, would you be with, within the square footage limit or close to it?
Uh, I think we'd be close to it, from the math I was doing real quick before I came in. Yeah, we'd be, we'd probably be a couple of square feet over with the way it's sized right now, but we'd be, we'd be a lot closer than the hundred and forty-four.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Vitale?
I'll bring it up in our, in our discussion.
Okay, one question, again, you may not know, as far as any other advertisements that one could see driving by, identifying any, anything for, for the store, would...
The only thing that there would be in, if you're talking about like window vinyls and such, there'll be an open sign. It's a corporate standard that hangs inside the window.
Okay.
It just looks like a, you know, the, the pizza thing, and it says open. Um, and there's some vinyl on the door that gives their hours.
Right, but that, but that's it.
Yeah, they're not going, they're not, they don't do a lot of vinyl on the windows. All of their stuff, exterior and advertising-wise, is this sign package. And once you step in, the walls themselves inside the actual theater are their, their internal advertising, kind of giving it that theater feel.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay. Let me, before I move on, there is a letter here, I'll, I'll read into the record from Carlton Defoe. It is, hello, City of Nashville. Yeah, it just came in today on November thirteenth by email to, to Mr. Carter. Hello, City of Nashville, Zonville, my name is Carlton Defoe and I own the building at one oh seven to one oh nine Northeastern Boulevard in Nashville. I believe that the current allowed size, square footage measurements are more than enough for any company to operate easily. We are living in an age of internet and everyone sees Domino's pizza ads all over the TV, radios, and online. Anyone who is going to Domino's to get food knows that have a pickup location and new sit-down location. Those that don't will surely know soon as their commercials start running online, on the radio, newspapers, and TV. Domino's delivers and soon we'll have a sit-down restaurant, too. The many signs that are allowed will be lighted up and glowing all night long. There is no reason they need to be bigger than they, than, than, than need. I am concerned of the safety of the fifty-plus employees I have working in our building daily. If the signs are bigger and flashier, it adds to the distraction that drivers face daily. Now having a, now having a double the size Domino's sign or a bigger pizza deal will not make the road safer. I also think the City of Nashville should make it so the owners of the buildings have to apply for variances on their own. Allowing barlow signs to fill our, all the paperwork and answer the questions for them is not the intended purpose. Like barlow signs is going to say anything bad about a bigger sign. It's a complete conflict of interest allowing a sign company to fill out, apply, and lobby for it. They check the box saying it's a safety issue, we need a bigger sign, et cetera. I argue that the exact, the exact oppose it. The safety is for my employees and customers that come to my building daily. Having a bigger sign, allowing for bigger food deals, isn't Domino's marketing campaign. They use print, online radio, and TV. The world is evolving and this is a good opportunity for the City of Nashville to help change the look of the city. I hope this email gets the intended folks, I cannot attend the meeting tonight. I have called the planning office seven times today and left a voicemail. Thank you, Carlton Defoe, from one oh seven to one nine Northeastern Boulevard. Okay, thank you. We'll consider that as somebody with questions, concerns, or opposition. Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition in the audience? Seeing none, sir, you have five minutes to speak in rebuttal of the letter.
Well, I mean, one of the things I can say, the signs, the, the current illuminated signs that are permitted are not larger than code. They're not, they don't flash, they don't do anything crazy. Um, they lighten, say, Domino's with a logo. Um, the signs that we're asking for the variance for are not internally illuminated whatsoever. They do have wash lighting on them from the building, but that was an architectural detail put in by the architect. I don't believe that these signs cause any type of safety issue, they're not gonna distract drivers, they're not, we're not putting lights around them to flash and, and make people look at them in that fashion. So that's really my rebuttal would be, 'cause that seems to be the big stickler about this particular part, is that, you know, bigger and flashier, I'm not trying to put a, a two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot sign on the wall that says Domino's. It's, we're looking for just a normal corporate standards package sized appropriately to the building so that it looks nice when the building is completed.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, any questions? You're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open a public meeting. Oh, uh... Excuse me?
No rebuttal and opposition, 'cause they, that guy's in here.
Right, that, yeah, again, I, I know, but again, there was no other opposition, that, that person would've had a chance to come up. But being, not being here, that's why I moved on, but I should've explained that. Uh, this is, this is interesting again, because, you know, first of all, I've, it's kind of nice to see a package come in before the building actually gets half demolished and built, right? So this is something new, at least for me, and I haven't been here that long, but I haven't seen that yet. So the two Domino's signs above are, have been approved, right, as we, as we read? So we're really looking at the two extra items, and this is the, the non-standard signs that we haven't seen before. So a couple of things, as I was looking at that, you know, again, it seems like a lot, but I, again, you know, the signs, you know, it's, it's funny, the signs are there, but it's actually, you know, again, to me, it's not like this big box sign and it's not lighted. Um, yes, there is perimeter lighting around the building, which I did see that, but I knew by looking at this drawing that it wasn't designed for the signs, it was, I think, more designed for the aesthetics of, of the, the new building, the new remodel building. One of the things that I kind of noticed in, when I was looking at this and I asked Mr. Fark a question, there's a lot of glass here, so I asked him, first of all, is this the design of the building? And he's, he affirmed that this is gonna be the building, the way it looks with all this glass. And one of the interesting things is, is that, that for these two extra signs that they're looking for, they could achieve the same thing by putting them on the inside of the window, and as long as they were twelve inches back, they could put as much stuff as they wanted in front of those windows. So as I was looking at that, and that's in, that's in, it's at one ninety dash two sixty-four, if you need to look it up, that, that, that code, code in the code book. So twelve inches behind the glass, they could put as much sign as, as signs that they want. And so I'm looking at that, that's why I asked him a question whether or not there would be anything behind the glass, or I think he understood what I was asking for, the applicant. So this could be achieved in the same way, by putting it behind the glass, but then I look at that, I'm like, then to me, it doesn't, it, to me, would detract or it would actually start looking kind of like, like a little bit like a circus-type thing, right? So, so I, I look at this and, and I know what it's been trying to achieve and I know that the signage in itself, I do agree with you, Mr. Curry, that in some respects, it's not really a hardship that I have to add all this extra signs. Um, but I also know that, you know, this is kind of the new look of Domino's. I have seen the Domino's in Hudson, and I have to say, it's like an improvement on that corner over there. I mean, couldn't figure out what was going on for a while, but once they got going with their, it, it doesn't really, you know, there's a Domino's there, it's new, so you look at it, but it's not like, I look at it and I say, boy, that's really ugly or whatever. That's my opinion, right? So I look at this and, and I say, well, you know, because of the type of sign, it's not really an illuminated sign, it's just on the side of the building, maybe no different than if it was some type of a design that was put up or in, you know, or part of the building structure architecturally. Um, so I guess I don't see it as this obtrusive-type signage. So again, if it was a lit sign, I mean, sticking out, if it was lit, lit up, all kinds of stuff, I, I think I would be inclined to something a little bit different. But right now, you know, I, I wanna hear from the rest of you, but right now, this is my thoughts. This, I would rather see, I guess, right now, the way I'm looking at it, I would rather see this on each wall. I, I would even go as far as put stipulation that besides the hours and the open sign, there'd be nothing else in the windows. And that's kind of how I'm looking at this, and I would kind of look at that signage. Ms. Vitale?
That, that was actually what I was thinking about when I was saying to discuss it later, is, is if it was part of the building. Like, we know that we've been putting murals on the buildings everywhere downtown. And I don't know if they've had any requirements for those or anything, but they definitely, it's like, it's like putting up a sign, in a sense.
Public art.
Pardon me?
Public art.
Public art. So would we, if this was a painted-on one, would it be considered like public art? It's, that's just my, that's just my thought. Um, if it was part of the architecture and let's say they tiled it in that way and it was a tiled sign, it was, you know, all part of the actual structure of the building. I have to agree with you, I think it's better to have an unlit sign like this as part of the branding on the side of the building. Could it be smaller, could they fit it into, you know, to the requirements of the city? I don't know, because we don't, we don't know what the, what Domino's is actually asking for, for sizes. But I definitely like the idea of, of the stipulation of the window and keeping those, that a clean look, window-wise, to go with it. But I, I would agree, as far as the branding, I would rather see an uninternally-lit sign that maybe just has the light wash over it than, than having it, everything over the windows.
Ms. Lionel?
The signs themselves, each sign doesn't, you know, is fine. I, I think the, the thing that worries me is we're being asked to have more signs than the code says and more square footage of signs than the code says. And... And the reason that they're here at all is that they want these signs on the Pittsburgh Avenue side, where nobody's going to see it except the people who are already perhaps there, or maybe eating out at, at tables and something like that. It seems wholly unnecessary to me. And I would, I'm worried about the precedent of granting variances for additional promotional signs. As I said earlier, we've often granted additional directional signs or identification signs, but that's not what we're doing, we're here for tonight. And I'm reluctant to start down that road.
Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I'm, in short, I'm not finding support for this application. Taking a step back, you know, the, the business there has, in my opinion, a distinct advantage because it's in a PI zone to begin with, of which it's under a variance for. So, the competition by zoning is less, and that's a huge advantage. And as I had stated in the questions, the building's predominant and up front. Right now, the applicant's using, you know, about seventy-three feet of about ninety, I mean, seventy-three square feet of about ninety-three square feet of permitted sign And so, there's, there's more room that the applicant has by right. When I look at the picture of the door with item D on it, you know, there's a, I'm guessing a seven-foot-high door, and that hundred percent real dough sign is probably up nine or ten feet.
It's eight feet.
Is it?
It's marked on the others.
Okay, yeah, but it's off the ground, uh, setup, yeah. So, I, I'm, I, I don't find the need for the overage, combined with the fact that those signs that they're requesting it for is really an advertisement for the business and not products versus a directional sign. So, in short, I'm, I'm not finding support for it.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes, I'm not convinced fully one way or the other yet, but I do think one of the things that's driving this overage is the fact that there are two frontages, and I understand our code doesn't actually directly comprehend that, but to me, that's what's unique about this property and the situation, and that the way business is going to be set, they actually have reason to have signage on both of those facades. So, I guess, so that's, I think, a key part of this, to me, and it's, and I understand even they were confused originally by, you know, the earlier part of the testimony, thinking, all right, we have all this frontage, and our calculation doesn't work that way, and I'm not saying we should give them what would probably be somewhere pushing two-hundred square feet, I think, just by calculation, because I think both frontages are fairly similar, I remember just from what I was looking at, so maybe it's a hundred-and-eighty feet, or whatever, a hundred-and-seventy, or, but, still about a hundred-and-forty-four, so I don't see that there was any, at least intentional calculation to try to get to what might be theoretically allowed if all frontage could have been used for the calculation. So, I think, scale-wise, that the signage will actually be reasonable and appropriate for the two facades. The other thing I, you know, I'm not saying that I don't particularly care for this item D sign, and to me, it just, I don't, I don't like it, but that's personal preference, but I, I actually, when I think about the, the aesthetics of that overall facade, I think it's going to feel out of, a little bit out of balance, because you have all these windows and doors and everything on the left side and nothing on the right side, so it actually seems like it might be helpful just from an appearance perspective. And again, I just find it might be my own personal aesthetic preference, but just in terms of, a lot of times, these things with architectural interest and all does get down to kind of visual interest and balance and those kind of things, so. I imagine that there probably are ways that this, everything could be done down to a lesser square footage, maybe the, you know, maybe the, the letters and the Domino's logo part of things, maybe there's a, the next size down could be used for that, or maybe the one facade could be scaled down, or something like that. But I guess, I don't feel like it's going to be out of scale with, with the structure, and I, I guess I just want to also say one thing to Mr. Lionel, and I understand, I think, kind of what you're trying to say, but I just want to note, no matter what we might or might not do here, we're not setting precedent, right? We don't, we don't set precedent with any case. We might reference it, we might talk about it, it might be, you know, how we look at something possibly, but just because we would do something that somebody would say, oh, that was precedent because you did this marketing thing, I don't, we don't, we actually don't work that way, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but let me also comment that we're not discussing the Domino's sign that identifies the building. That's, that, that's not being, that's not part of this application.
I think in the totality it is, at some level, because there's four signs, and there's an overage on square footage, so.
Well, the-
And there's two facades.
Yeah, but the, the, the four signs are, are like, these hand-tossed, and, and a hundred percent real, they want two of each on, on each side of the building. We're not, we're not-
No, they-
That's not part of the app-
Well, no, let's make sure, they said two of each, no, they have, they want the, this item D on one facade, and they want item C on the other facade. So, there's-
Left side and rear, there's no-
A total of four signs.
Yeah, total of four signs.
Two Domino's signs, there's a hundred percent real mozzarella kind of alattex, and there's the hand toss.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sorry.
Otherwise, I think you'd be talking about six signs. I just want to make sure that wasn't-
Okay. Like, to us, all signs are, are really advertising. I mean, the two Domino's signs with the, the logo, with the, the Domino, I mean, that's, that's their actual corporate business name, that's, but the other signs, you know, even though, you know, these signs could be like the hand toss sign, that could be on any pizza establishment. You know, the other one with a hundred percent dough and the other, the other words they have there, that also could be anywhere, but they're still advertising for this business. So, to us, there's four advertising signs, really, you know. Some may take more precedent for the company, I mean, they're, they're obviously going to want the Domino's signs, because that's, you drive down the street, oh, Domino's, that's where we want to go for dinner. They're probably more important than the, the hand toss and the other one-hundred-percent sign, but they're still all advertising signs.
All set, Mr. Shaw? Ms. McKay.
Thank you. I concur with yourself and with Mr. Shaw. I look at, and actually, Mr. Falk brought up a good point. I look at the signs as the Domino's signs are identifying the business. The other two signs are identifying the product that is contained or made by that business, so it is advertising. And when you go online, or you go anywhere, you see those words. They are synonymous now with Domino's. I don't have a problem with this. I like the idea of the balance. I see the symmetry that would be off if the signs were not there. I also understand the logic of thinking you had a certain amount of frontage and then finding out you didn't have that, based on the way the building is aligned, built, however. I'm actually in support of this, and I think listening to all the information and the comments that I've heard from my colleagues have helped reinforce my initial thought.
I just wanted to take a look at the colored drawings, because sometimes the black and white doesn't always give you the perspective, so. Ms. Forrest?
Your mic's off. Your mic's still red. There you go.
I concur with my colleagues. I'm actually in favor of the applicant. I believe this is their rebranding. I, I mean, I, I really agree with what everybody has said today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Ms. Vitale.
If you were going to take the facade, one, just the front, the way it's proposed, they would probably add in the hand toss somewhere and take the other, you know, the other side off. They would, I think they, within the square footage that we allowed, Sophie took it, one facade that way. I think they're within the, the square footage is allowed. I do think that the Pittsburgh side of the road is the one that you will actually see more from, coming from the one direction, because you see that side of the building for quite a distance before you actually get to the building. The front of the building, people coming from the other way are only going to see it for a few minutes. You know, not even a few minutes, those, you're going to see it for seconds.
Any more discussion? So, I'm, I, seems like we're going to split, I don't know, Mr. Shaw, are we live? I can certainly make a motion and see if that passes. All right. Before we get going, those in favor of the motion, I was going to make a stipulation, and I don't know if, a special condition, is that something that you still would, to make this motion, to be in favor of this motion, would you want me to make this motion for the windows not to have any advertisement in the windows, except for their open-close sign and the hours, the vinyl, the vinyl in the window they would put for open and close? Other than that, there would be no, no other signage allowed? Is that something we can stipulate?
I like the glass.
Okay. That would prevent them, right, from going a foot back and doing anything? No advertising through the window?
They could, they could have signage of more than twelve inches back, and we don't really count it as signage, but just the window sign itself, if it's something affixed to the window-
Right, okay.
We do count those.
Okay, all right. Is that something that you'd be in favor of, if I added that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, just make the motion and see how that goes. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the area variance for Nashua Dome LLC, applicants Balo signs. The address is nine-nine Northeastern Boulevard. Description is Nashua Dome LLC, owner Balo signs, applicant nine-nine Northeastern Boulevard, sheet one forty, lot forty-six, requesting a following variances from land use code section one ninety dash one oh eight, section C subsection three, to exceed the maximum sign area, ninety-two-point-seven square feet permitted, seventy-three-point-two-six square feet issued from signed permit dated ten-five eighteen, a total of a hundred-and-forty-four-point-three square feet proposed, and two from the land use code section one ninety dash one oh eight, section E subsection two, to exceed maximum number of wall signs, two issued from signed permit dated ten-five eighteen. Three permitted, a total of four wall signs proposed. Here's in the PI zoning district. We find that the variances needed to enable applicants' proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits stopped by the applicant, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. The discussion, there was discussion about, again, the two Domino's signs are permitted use. We are talking about items C and D, which are, we consider those advertisement signs on the Northeastern Boulevard facade and the Northeastern Boulevard facade. These signs are going to protrude about an inch, so it's not a typical, I don't want to say typical, but not a, a sign that's self-illuminated or illuminated for its own purpose. It was noted that there is perimeter lighting all around the building, but that had not, that was not designed for the signs, it is just for the building itself. So, again, just to note that these two signs are shallow to the, to the, to the facade. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the audience, it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels, is not contrary to public interests and substantial justice we serve, and we'd like to add a special condition that, that there would be no signs, I think I used the word, we'll use the word, affixed to the, to the window, no, no fixed signs to all, to any of the glass surfaces, inside or outside glass services of the new building. And the only thing that, again, we would be allowing, again, is would be the, you know, open-close sign and the hours as they apply them to their, to their door. So, again, a special condition would be not to allow any other advertisements or signs affixed to the inside or, inside or outside of the glass panels on the, on any facade of that building. With that, I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Second, but I, actually, then, it might be maybe more detailed than is needed in that stipulation, but I think that the allowed lettering on the window or door should also include, you know, phone number and address, you know, the standard identification that would be allowed, so I just want to make sure that we don't put something there that, is more restrictive than it really should be from a practical standpoint.
So, I'll amend it to the typical-
You know, you know-
How would you phrase that?
Address and, and phone number type identification, regular identification.
Business-
Business identification.
Proprietor's name and number.
All right, so I'll amend that, and I think that, again, the idea was to specifically say that all the other glass is really something we don't want any advertisement on. Are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, so there was seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's four to nothing, and opposed, and opposed, Mr. Curry. I know Ms. Forrest, you raised your hand, and thank you for your support. Okay, sir, your application has been, your, your, your application has, has been approved. Again, just be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. With that, I'll close case number, number two, an open case number two. Okay, I, I'm going to take a five-minute break, please. Thank you.
Sure. I didn't misunderstand what we were saying. I thought there were two signs on each, so. When you said that, yeah, all right. Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, another week or two.
Thanks. Another week or two.
All right, we're going to get started again. We'll start with case number three. I just want to note that Ms. Boras had to leave for the evening. So case number three, I'll read that into the record. The owner is CPC Investments LLC, applicants DNR Towing Incorporated, 17 Long Ave. Description is CPC Investments LLC owner, DNR Towing Incorporated applicant, 17 Long Avenue, Sheet E, Lot 196, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 256, to allow a vehicle towing business and vehicle repairs within existing building with parking of commercial trucks outside the building, and two variance from Land Use Code Section 190-44, Section A, to exceed maximum fence height, six feet allowed, eight feet proposed along easterly property line. Zoning District RA HB, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Gottesman and Hollis in Nashua. I'm here representing CPC Investments LLC, and I have a representative of theirs here tonight, and also the owner of the property, and also the applicant, DNR Towing, and Representative DNR is here this evening, should any questions come up. Property is identified as Sheet E, Lot 196, or 17 Long Avenue for your location. If you didn't have a chance to go out, or if you went out and you couldn't exactly locate it, it's located behind the gas station, which is right there at Exit 6 off of Broad Street, to the rear of that and to the rear of the bank building, which is also there at the intersection of Spar and Long Avenue. The building itself has been there for some time, since 1982, when it was constructed as a result of a variance. I have given you a booklet, which is really a reference booklet, because I was concerned that the entire record might not be available to you. This is the building record, and as questions come up, it's really more of a reference. I'm not going to go through each item. The most relevant part, or the easiest part probably for you, is there's one map in there that's folded out. If you unfold that, that was the site plan approved for the building construction, and I've drawn in color so you can identify where the zone line is and where the property lines are. It just helps you locate how the property is split zone. You're going to hear a reference to that, but it's split zone property, that is, the zone line comes through the middle of, through the part of the property, and a good portion of the property is located in the residential zone, and the rest is located in the highway business zone. The history of this property is rather lengthy, but I'm going to quickly go through it. In 1982, Ted Doobie owned the property. He owned the house next door as well, and you will hear from the owner of the house who's here this evening, represented by an attorney in opposition. The property was owned by Ted Doobie. He ran a rubbish business. He kept all his rubbish trucks on this property, and he came into the zoning board and asked for a variance to allow a building to go up so he could store his rubbish trucks and work on his rubbish trucks inside the building. At the time of the application, he said he was going to build it big enough to hold seven trucks. And to make a long story short, the minutes reflect that it was granted, and there were conditions at the time that the outside parking had to be in the highway business district. The site plan progression was they made a survey and found out that the zone line didn't go through the part of the property where they could park the cars, so they came back to the zoning board and got a further variance in October 26, 1982, where they asked for commercial parking in the RA zone, and that would be parking as shown on that site plan, which is right off of the driveway and up against the residential property. That variance was also granted to allow the parking on the east side of the plan with the requirement that the trash trucks must park inside. In December 2001, after several different uses of the property, including Dunn's demolition, which had trucks there for a while, there was an email from Attorney Don A. representing the then applicant, Kenny Towing and Transportation, addressed to Carter Fock, asking Carter if he would issue a ruling on the matter of whether or not the towing business would be similar to what's permitted out there by the variance and what had been there under Dunn's demolition, basically trucks in the garage and on the property. And Carter wrote a letter, which is in the packet there, to Attorney Don A., and says, "The staff reviewed the email and agree that the proposed use of the property is substantially similar to the previous use." So, fast forward today, what we have for permitted uses is a towing operation, we have repair associated with that inside the garage, and we have commercial parking allowed outside and a site plan. What happens is DNR Towing occupies the building under that use, and over the last five years, what has happened to DNR Towing is the commercial truck repair, starting with trucks that came in there from towing but now expanding, has moved into the principal use of the property, and the towing is the secondary use. And so as a result of that, the city cited the property owner, saying, "You don't have the variances necessary to do what you're doing," which is the majority of your operation is clearly truck repair, commercial truck repair, and the, and the accessory use or secondary use is towing. So it flipped from towing principal, commercial truck repair second, to the opposite. And that's how they ended up in my office, saying, "We need to do something. We've got to apply for a variance here. The city has asked us to stop until we get a variance, unless we get a variance." So what I'm asking for is essentially, I wanted to clarify that all these uses still continue, but what I'm really asking for is that the use of truck repairs as a principal use, having overtaken the secondary use of towing, be permitted. The second application is, in order to make this site a little more feasible for the neighbors, we are asking for a variance to allow the existing six-foot fence to go up to eight feet. It would heighten, raise the height of the fence. So that's the background. I'm going to quickly go through the five points so I don't exceed my time. First, for the truck repair. Will not be contrary to the public interest. The net change, it will not change the character of the neighborhood. So defining the character of the neighborhood is always in the eyes of the beholder. But my client's property sits directly behind the gas station, which has multiple tanker trucks coming and going. It's a very busy gas station. It has activity in a storefront activity. It has gas pumps out front. It has delivery trucks coming, has a car wash on the back, and most importantly, has the Duncan Donuts franchise right there. If you ever go there in the morning or at night, you can see it backs up right in front of my client's entry point, backs all the way down Long Avenue in front of the neighbor's house as well. It is a very busy area. It also has the bank and the bank's parking lot, and then it has our neighbor, the single residence, that used to be owned by Ted Doobie, who used to own the trucking business, but he's not there and we don't own that house. Our position is, we're not going to change that character by just allowing the commercial truck repairs, which are permitted inside the building as a secondary use to the towing operation. We're asking that it become the principal use, stay within the building. There have been times where it has not been in the building, and we're the first to admit that, but we realize it has to be in the building, and that's what we're asking for. We're asking for the commercial trucks also to be parked in the area where the parking is allowed. We will stipulate no outside commercial repairs in that parking area. And with that, we believe that it's not substantially going to make a difference in the character of the neighborhood. We're also asking that there be, as I say, the, the eight-foot tall fence. We don't think there's a substantial change in the impact of the neighborhood or the character of the neighborhood by going up from six feet to eight feet in the fence. There's no threat to health, safety, or welfare. This area, there's a public road, there's a public way, there's sewer, there's water. There's no reason to threaten health, safety, or welfare. The repairs have to be done inside. Yes, there'll be cars, trucks that will run outside, but they're not going to run all day. They come in, they run, they move into the garage, they work on them. When they're done, they move out and they come and go. Not, not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, again, won't alter the character of the neighborhood because the pre-existing uses have been there for a long time. And there's no threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Substantial justice will be done. This will be approved for truck, it's been approved for truck storage with repairs in the building, and we want to just flip the use, the principal use being the repairs, and then the towing will be allowed as an accessory or part, part of that use. We believe it will be fair to the owner and the balance, there'll be no harm to the public or private interests. Currently, you could put, you could tow 24/7 as a towing operation as the principal use, but we're stipulating business hours operation of the repairs inside will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We're also offering that if you saw fit to grant this, we would agree not to park trucks in the street, even though it's public parking and allowed. We would make that as accommodation specifically to the neighbor, not to park trucks and not to allow customers' trucks to park in front of the neighbor's house. They do now, they can now, it's a public right of way, and unless it's restricted by the alderman, they can park there. But we would add that as a agreed-upon stipulation, no parking in front of the neighbor's house on Long Avenue. The fourth point is no adverse effect on the values of abutting properties. Clearly, we have a neighbor whose property is residential. We have a neighbor whose property is business. We have another neighbor whose property is the bank, which is business. The business properties aren't going to be affected because the use is minor. You're going to hear from the neighbor, I know, that they feel that their values will be affected, and we'll let them present that case. But we have a report, which is the last item in your booklet, which is prepared by an appraiser who evaluated the site, evaluated the abutting uses, evaluating the proposed use, as well as what's permitted by the city records, and the variances haven't been granted. And that opinion was that it would not add, on the last page of that opinion, the very last page of the book, top of the page says, "The values of abutting properties will not be adversely affected." And we think that's simply because we're talking about a minor change here, going from a truck repair, repair of vehicles that go, has been going on in that building since 1982, when the testimony before the zoning board of adjustment is, yes, we will repair vehicles in that building. So they've always been repaired there, but we're now going to the principal use. That will be a commercial vehicle, truck repair business going on in that building. We don't think that's a significant change from what's out there. Finally, the hardship. The property is unique. I don't think, really have to stretch an argument here. The zoning board has twice found that the property is unique. It's a split zone property. It backs up to a very busy commercial activity, and it's adjacent to a residential district. What really makes it unique is these variances have been granted, so you have a use that's there, and we're trying to make a use that fits in. We don't want to put rubbish trucks in there, but we want to use it for truck repair. The real question, therefore, is whether the restriction prohibiting this type of use has any fair or substantial relationship to the purpose of the ordinance. And the purpose of the ordinance is to keep values of properties, keep your use, which is commercial here, and residential away. You've got this property in the middle. Anytime you've got one split zone between highway business and residential, you've got a battleground, and that's what you would normally have here. And I would normally say, if I were coming in here or fresh off the boat, I would argue, this is a hard case. But this case has been decided since 1982. These trucks have been there, the truck use has been there, the repair has been there, and we're just trying to legitimize this majority use. We think it's a reasonable use. That's what you ultimately have to decide, in my opinion. Is this a reasonable use for that site? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the fence, I didn't add all those other components, arguments to the fence, but quickly, the fence won't adversely affect the value of surrounding properties. It's covered again in that opinion letter. You're going up two feet, which would in fact help, I believe, the neighbors. Two more feet of height protects you from that view, that at six feet, you see certain things above it. At eight feet, you see fewer, see fewer things. It would be fair, it would be fair and reasonable use of the property to put an eight-foot fence when you have these two conflicting uses. A lot of times, you don't want to have an eight-foot fence in residential areas because it sticks out, but here, it would be a reasonable use, in, in our opinion. Happy to answer any questions?
Still, I know. What I see here is that the current six-foot fence is a chain link fence, is that correct?
There is a stockade six-foot fence. There is also a chain link fence around it. But we would propose to change the six-foot stockade, which is on the boundary line between the residence and the business, to go up two more feet.
As a stockade fence.
A stockade fence, that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Curry, I have this, you know, sorry.
I was just wondering about, like, the noise and the doors open. You know, I'm wondering if back in 1982, when a presentation is made that truck repairs inside is a minor business, what I think perhaps could be speculated is, you know, a truck pulls in, the doors go down, you don't hear too much, maybe, you know, the truck repair facilities that I'm familiar with, probably six months out of the year, even up here, like, I find the doors open and a lot of noise coming out. I'm just wondering, how often are those doors open, and what's, what would you say is kind of the noise factor generated from what's now the primary truck repair business in the building?
The answer to the doors is, I think you're probably right on point, is maybe a little less than six months, but a typical truck repair, even with air conditioning, those doors are open in the summertime. So you're going to have some noise from truck repair. The shop is some distance from the house, and the fence will deflect some of that noise, but yes, the door, I did ask my client and the applicant, will those doors be open in the summer? And the answer is, yeah, they'll be open in the summer because it gets hot in there. You can't air condition everything. I think almost every garage, as you say, has them open, whether you're, even if you're dealers these days. But in the winter, obviously closed.
And just the thumbnail sketch, what percentage of the property is highway business and what is RA zone?
If I had to guess by the plan, which is there in the file, I mean, I'm guessing as much as you, I, I'm going to say a quarter to a third, maybe, it looks like to me. I didn't square foot it off, and I didn't ask anyone to do that.
Mr. Fock has that information.
Nineteen percent's HB.
Nineteen percent, yeah, so, it's less than a quarter.
And, you know, I was curious about this, looking at the application, but you had mentioned it, so Mr. Doobie, when he lived there, he was the one who built the facility?
Yeah.
And then years go by, and when did he sell that parcel off?
I don't have the answer to that. I should have, but I don't have the answer.
All right.
I do know that the current owner moved in after the business that's there now was, has been there.
All right.
But he, they'll testify how long they've owned it, so.
And that, the, the proposed eight-foot stockade fence, if approved, that would just be on the easter, easterly side?
Just on the easterly side only.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now.
Ms. Vitale.
On the east side, the topography's higher there at the front than it is down in the, in the back? Is that how I'm reading it? In, in the house?
That's what that plan shows, but that's not what I observed.
Okay. Okay.
In the back, the houses in the back actually were owned by my client. They did some redevelopment back there, so they owned that land. And it's a little bit higher elevation, actually, so they're buffered a bit from the backside of the, of the building, if you will. It's really the east side, which is all on that flat level.
Yeah, and it, I thought it seems like it's a little bit higher, so I think that two feet additional on the fence seems like it would, it would, it would help.
Every, every foot helps, as far as I'm concerned, with a fence, in, between these two competing uses.
Mr. Shaw.
So how come there isn't proposal for the fence to be on the northerly or westerly sides towards Dawn?
I think the activity focus is right next to the neighbor, on the east side. And that was really what our attention went to, was to deal with that neighbor. We didn't have any other issues with the neighbors to the rear, any questions, concerns. If somebody asked, we would come back in for a variance to go on that side, too, but that really wasn't, we didn't feel it was necessary to do eight feet all the way around the property.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Just have you name and address, please?
My name's Kevin Corvo, and full disclosure, my brother, Brian, owns the commercial property, but I'm here, actually, to speak for my mother, who, who lives directly behind this property at Three Dawn Street. During the time she has lived there, she has never had any issue with noise or air pollution from, from, from the facility doing the repairs. She keeps her windows open, you know, basically, all summer, never, never had any issues whatsoever. Additionally, give you a little history, my mother's godfather, Maurice Paul, owned One Dawn Street, which is also directly behind this commercial facility. And he owned that for over 40 years. He was the original house on that, on that abutting street behind there. And he was there, and, and she was there when this facility was used as a rubbish business. And I can tell you that, you know, as a use of that building, she much prefers this use as, as opposed to the noise of the rubbish business and the smell of the rubbish business, which she clearly remembers from years ago. So, that's, that's, was basically her opinion, and her, her values have gone up. You know, we've done substantial improvements in and around that property, and she, she would not have spent, you know, a substantial amount of money improving her property if she didn't feel comfortable with the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Excuse me.
Question?
There's a question? Ms. Curry has a question for you.
On your, your mother's side, on the west side, we'd say she's, she's abuts on the west side of the building.
Actually, more the north.
More the north?
What number, what number was her home?
Hers is Three Dawn Street. She's directly, so if you're looking at the building, she's directly behind it. Yeah, the north side.
Okay. Oh, okay, so she's number, yeah, so she's on the northern, north side, okay.
Correct.
All right, that's answers, thank you. Yeah, she's quite a ways, her structure looks hundred, 200 feet away from the building.
Yep.
Right, and it looks to me at the building, when I'm on Long Street, it looks like it goes up a steep hill and then left.
The grade does go up, yeah, you're correct, yep.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Corvo? Okay, thank you. Anybody else with, that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Come on up and give your name, please.
I'm Attorney Michael Atkins. I am here on behalf of Michael and Brandy Tranieleo, and their two young children, who are the direct abutters, a three-month-old and a five-year-old boys, and I have packets, if I may.
Yes, please.
I think it's important to note that we're here for the variance as a result of the applicant's ongoing non-conforming behavior that's been going on for some period of time, and continued despite receiving a cease and desist in May of 2018 without abatement. And as a result, the city was required to commence an injunction seeking to permanently enjoin what is acknowledged to be an illegal use and activity of the property. I think one of the things that's important is, while there was a variance granted in 1982, that was for the construction of the garage for the Doobie trash business, because they were being kept outside in the yard for years. And so that was an improvement, to have a facility to park them in. When he was, as a result of the square footage of the building for the variance that was given in 1982, they were required to have certain parking spots. But Mr. Doobie, when he was given the, the variance, as you correctly point out, Mr. Curry, it was that he didn't even need those. He had no intention to use them, but he was required to have it because of the square footage of the building, the zoning required to be some certain parking spots. But all of the parking of the dump trucks that you see and garbage trucks had to be inside, to make it better, to make it more aesthetically acceptable in, in a zoning that is the better part of 80% residential. The 19% versus the rest, this is a tiny bit of highway business, the rest, the vast majority of this parcel is residential. And the repair of the trucks is not even brought up in the discussion, you know, back into 1982. The reason, I would submit, is because, okay, you're going to park them in there, that's great, it's going to be better because now they're covered, it's not this blight, these garbage trucks, every time that you would drive by, see them outside. And if you're going to be doing any repairs, make sure you are doing them inside. And that's how it existed. That's the only permissible use, that it's ever been, ever. What has been happened is an increasing non-conforming use, and I don't know if Mr. Doobie, how long he owned the property, apparently it didn't, he didn't mind it. But in any event, the permission that was sought and granted in regard to the tow trucks, if you read the permission slip, if you will, that was sent to Mr. Falk for Kenny Towing, they were a good neighbor, they were helping out the police. This was an auxiliary facility that had, to help the, the police for towing, because their main facility was in Amherst. This was not going to be a truck repair facility. If you just look through the packet quickly, you'll see the injunction that leads us here today, a map with the lot, a map in particular showing that 19% highway business versus residential. The next picture, if you see, it's dated April of 2011, that's when, about the time when Kenny Towing apparently was going to be engaging in their activity. That was not a variance request. I'm unaware of any public notice when Kenny Towing said, hey, can we use it? If you look at the next photograph in April of 2017, look at how that non-conforming use has expanded. My clients brought the property in July of 2012, and at that time, there was none of this activity going on, i.e. the activity that has been illegally going on for the better part of five years now. That has caused significant noise and light pollution, significant smells and smoke. If you look at photographs subsequent to the 2011 picture, you'll see how these trucks, that's my client's house, that these trucks are all parked in front of, with a three-month-old and a five-year-old child, all up and down the street, full-time, because that's their business. It's not allowed. It can't be allowed. It can't be allowed because it doesn't meet any of the criteria that is required for a variance. The pictures in regard to the repairs being, taking place inside, you can see the hood up, open right in front of their house, that's in front of their front door. Someone sitting underneath the truck, making a repair right in the middle of the street. Look at the parking of the vehicles that are there, these, this is not their business, right? If you'll see in the packet, we have an appraiser report that provides specifically that this would diminish the value of my client's property. He gave a good analogy in there, and he said, maybe I could wash my car in my driveway, and that'd be permitted, but I can't have everyone bring their car over and wash their cars in it. You'll see the little play area for the children in front of the house, that the cars are parked directly in front of, and while, it'd be great if they had a real good legitimate fence there currently, but it has been knocked down, and there's concern that it's going to fall in its current state onto the area where the children play. There's also been significant concern for hazardous waste storage. You'll see the photograph of the blue drum, it's not on any pallet or safety at all. The next photograph is another barrel out there, that it appears that there's also a transmission. Obviously, the disposal of transmission fluid and any fluids related to large commercial truck repair is a problem. There's another photograph with a tanker right there, parked right next to this residential neighborhood.
Attorney Atkins, I just, I, I, thank you very much, I just want to remind you of that we, you do have a time limit, and we try to hold that.
Yes.
Just in fairness for the rest of.
Absolutely, I appreciate the reminder, Mr. Chairman. And the, the last picture before the report of the appraiser, you'll see that the, it's hard to see, it looks like mist, it's smoke, that's November 9th, that's four days ago. That's what's going on on the property over into their house. Suffice to say that there's significant concern about the, the safety of the children, the smoke, again, just four days ago. This variance, I respectfully submit, should not be allowed because it's specifically contrary to the public interest. The request conflicts with the purpose of the zoning ordinance. It alters the essential character of my client's property. It also significantly expands an already existing non-conforming use. The application should be denied because the proposed use is specifically contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, seeking an impermissible expansion already of a non-conforming use. This is not similar to a volume of traffic that should be going on in that property if they were just a tow business and repairing their own trucks. This application should be denied because it is a substantial injustice would be done if this were to be allowed, and the harm to my client and his family is significantly outweighed by any benefit, hey, they want to change their business. Well, they can go to a different location if they want to do the commercial truck repair business. The proposed use will diminish the value of the surrounding property. Again, you'll see the appraiser report in there, and there are no special conditions that exist that literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, and again, to the contrary. Whether or not the towing business is allowed, it certainly wasn't allowed by variance, but that's not a commercial truck repair, and I significantly and respectfully ask this board to deny the application. And I appreciate the indulgence, I apologize for going over my time, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions.
You still have?
No, he, he already went over.
Oh, he went over, okay, I'm sorry.
I could be, yeah.
Yeah, Clark was, I'm sorry. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Curry.
So, we have a, a lot of pictures that you presented us with, you know, the activity you're describing, and these, I'm going to say, are mostly in the last year, I'm going to say 2017, 2018. Your client moved in there, purchased a home in 2012. Do you think there's been kind of like a linear scale-up? Has it been kind of exponential? How has the ramp-up of the picture from 2012 to 2017 been?
Yeah, and, and thank you for the question. Purchased in 2012, the current owners bought the property about a year later. So for the first year, my client got what he expected and bargained for when he checked and did his due diligence as to the use and activity there. Since 2013, it's probably been like this, is how my client would describe it, and just continuing. And I think one of the more frustrating points is, when you go and you're trying to get help and get compliance, and of course, the city issues a cease and desist, and just for a number, better part of four months, doesn't even comply.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
I wanted to go to a couple of the pictures, and just to try to get some bearings, so, starting with where there's like the picture of the play, play area in the back corner of the property. So, there's the, there's this, it looks like a fairly low chain-link fence running along the back of your client's property, but I'm trying to understand if that's the rear property line of your client's property, and there, I see a snowblower on the other side, I'm trying to figure out, like, does that belong to the business, or?
And the one with the player, wooden fence, is the easterly portion, so on the other side is the commercial space. The chain-link is towards the rear of his property, but it's not the property line. That's apparently five feet or so past the chain-link fence.
Okay. I mean, then, at least, the observation I have is that the, these trucks that are back here look to be beyond the, the property in question, so extending beyond 17.
Correct.
Going into what is probably, would ultimately be number five, or something like that, although it's an empty lot, of course. Okay, that, that seems to be the, the same thing, then, with the one with the drum, looks like it would be probably off their property, but, but close to it. Struggling a little bit, just to, the context of this one, that's got the other one with the drum, you know, there's the white drum, there's like, appears to be, I don't know if it's like, maybe an open bedded, you know, part of, back part of a truck, you know, it's kind of like the green, almost looks like fencing, but I think it's maybe part of, you know, an open truck bed. But it looks, then, like, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we can tell where that is from your client's property. It's a little hard to.
My understanding, that'd be the northeast corner, and you heard Attorney House talk about.
Please go to the mic, just because you need to make sure you get picked up.
Yes. You, you could see that this is the berm that's been built up, so, really wouldn't affect people that are up there. This is literally, you can see how close it is to my client's house. But yeah, that's the one with the transmission as well, the bucket, the barrel.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, yeah, I do. So, you had mentioned, I think you mentioned that back in 2012, your client, you said, did diligence and looked into, before he bought the property. Could you just state that again for me?
Sure. Knowing that there had been, there's a commercial business there and that he planned on starting a family, as to what couldn't be done. Okay, I can get by with a commercial business that they're going to park trucks inside, no problem. You see the picture from 2011 as to the use and type of activity that was going on there as compared to 2017, as to what was happening on that lot. And again, the only commercial parking there was, when the application first came in in 1982, they had surveyed it incorrectly. They didn't realize that it was, because they thought that any parking could only be in the HB, but then they realized that there was very little HB, actually, and that's because the vast majority was residential, and they said that you could park in RA. But again, that was understood to be for their employees, not for commercial business, not for commercial trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
And just a follow-up, because I think what Mr. Carrier might have been trying to get at also is, I think that what you were indicating is that this property that the applicant has got before us changed hands circa 2013.
Correct.
Or somewhere a year or so after.
Correct.
Your client purchased the adjacent property.
That's correct.
And then it was sometime after that change in ownership that then the changes occurred with the level of activity at this property.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And in addition to the smoke and the fumes, the hours of operation as well have been throughout the night, and trucks running, it's really not conducive to family sleeping.
Mr. Shaw, just took it to you, and then I'll come to you, Ms. McKay.
And I, one of the things I wanted to try to understand, and, I mean, to me, it seems like there would, there is a certain level of noise and activity run with, you know, typically the more heavy-duty tools that are required, especially probably deal with trucks and that kind of thing. But I guess, trying to get to some sense or understanding of what the, what the noise level is and what the constancy of that is.
Yeah.
If you could elaborate a little bit.
Yeah, I can, and Mr. Traniello is here, his wife is unable to be here because of being home with the children. The fumes, the light exhaust is, he said it can go till 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, and then they'll have cars, trucks running constantly. And the smells, the fumes, the noise, the light, the flashing lights coming in at all hours of the night. You know, trucks break down, right? They need to get towed, and, "Hey, we'll go to the repair place." Well, and they pull in at 3:00 in the morning, and then keep them running or try to keep them running. That has the activity exponentially increased, as I was demonstrating, Mr. Carrier was asking. The noise, light, smell, pollution likewise follows that increased activity.
Any other questions, Ms. McKay?
Thank you. On your picture dated 4/30/2011, as compared to 4/18/2017, vegetation seems extremely sparse. I mean, is that just the way the picture is taken, just the way it looks?
Are you asking for sparse vegetation in both pictures?
It doesn't look that way in 2011. What I'm asking is if it's, if this is an accurate depiction.
So, I think Mrs. McKay is pointing to the west of the property.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, so, you talking about this?
This, and, yeah, and then you look at this.
So, I think Mrs. McKay is pointing to the property that's not, this is not actually the property, it's the property behind, I guess she was just asking a question.
I guess it's.
It's still the west of the building.
But it's material.
My understanding, on the westerly, northwesterly side, there's more vegetation in the April 2011 photograph, you're correct. There is much less in the April 27 one, because that had been cut down because of the building of the houses and the berm, I guess, behind the building.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
That helps.
I just had to get my north-south square.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd.
And just one other question. So, the repairs that your, your client has noticed is basically all large equipment and nothing, not passenger vehicle or like pickup trucks, it's really, really the large vehicles, right?
Correct, large commercial vehicles. And again, it's not fixing their tow trucks in the garage, which arguably would comply with the, certainly the spirit and intent of the variance that was granted in 1982. That's just not the case.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions, concerns, or oppositions to this application? Seeing none, Attorney House, you have five minutes to rebut?
Thank you. First of all, Attorney Atkins made reference to the cease and desist and some degree of major outrage. I would say that the activity has continued despite the order to cease. I just want to state on the record that my client's position is that they are not in violation. They are in here because this business of the truck repair has grown, and the city has determined, in their opinion, that it's larger than the major activity of towing. You just heard some comment about since 2013, the neighbor, when they moved in, since 2013, which is the time DNR moved in, the activity has increased since, from 2012, and it's ramped up and ramped up. But the description was, "The trucks are coming in at all hours of the night, the lights are flashing, their trucks are starting up, there's noise." This is all the do, this is the towing business, as I said. They can run it 24/7, they have a right to under the previous ruling. And a lot of that activity is towing, and it's going to continue to increase as businesses increase. It's a legitimate and lawful increase of a towing business. If it's busy at night, you're going to have tow trucks coming in and hauling in cars. What is not going on is the truck repair business at night. We've stipulated that there are hours, those are the current hours of the operation that go on there now, they're going to continue to be that way. The reason why there was no change or no action taken was the cease and desist and the city's position, in my client's opinion, was not, was incorrect. For one thing, they didn't even notice that Mr. Fark had issued an opinion letter that the towing business could be there. They told us we couldn't have the towing business there. So, there are some issues at contest here, that's why you end up in court, that's why you have lawyers, because every side's got a different story. There are two sides to that story. But I think what's important is what you heard was Attorney Atkins stating that the activities have been occurring late at night, the trucks, the noise, that is the towing business. That has the right to be there, and they're going to continue to be there, whether this variance is granted or not. What we're focusing on is allowing a principal use so that we don't run into this border, are you less than 50% activity or more than 50% activity of truck towing, I mean, of truck repair? We keep the truck repair inside, seven to seven, and we want to be, make sure that it is either permitted by variance or it's not. And if it's not, then the truck repair business has to be accessory or secondary to the DNR towing activity. Second of all, the 1982 variance did in fact, the question by Mr. Kuzma was, "Are you going to repair inside?" Yes, we're going to repair inside. So, repairs have been ongoing in this property forever, it's not a brand-new use. The third is, the third point is that there's some question about hazardous waste and barrels, and you're going to have that activity whether it's a towing operation, you can go by DNR on Canal Street, you're going to see pieces of truck outside, as trucks, as cars that are wrecked are brought in, pieces are there, they get removed. But all matters with regard to hazardous waste, the materials have to be taken care of, they're correctly regulated, those barrels are not full of hazardous waste, it's kind of disingenuous to make a threat that they might be their barrels, but they're not full of hazardous waste. All fluids are drained from the transmission, they get removed, they come, they go, that's the nature of a tow, of a towing business, and it's a big towing business. And finally, I'd just like to sort of focus on the appraisal report, in that the report presented by Mr. Atkins says in the first paragraph, "It's to include vehicle repair and increased outdoor parking at an industrial garage." And we're not asking for increased outdoor parking, we're asking to make sure that the trucks can park outside. So, there's some question of whether they could or they could not park. Frankly, when you read the variance, as in there, it doesn't limit the parking, it just says "commercial parking." So, we want to be clear that that's why we asked for it. I think what's most important in this appraisal, and what's a little bit troubling is, on page two of the appraisal, it says, "It is my understanding that the tenants in the property have made application to expand the industrial use of the property, which use is not allowed by right in either of the two zones in which portions of the property fall." This is the premise of his opinion. I want to point out that vehicle repair and service, which is what we're asking for, is use 140 of the table of uses. It is permitted in the HB district. So, his premise that we're expanding an unpermitted industrial use, not permitted in the HB or in the RA, is wrong. It's flat-out wrong. It is a permitted use in the HB district. So, based on that faulty premise, he then makes conclusions about, "It is highly likely that allowing the unfettered, unpermitted truck repair business will generate additional traffic as well as noise and olfactory pollution." Doesn't give any basis for how he comes up to that conclusion, but he just says it's highly unlikely. And he talks about the analogy of, "Because I wash my car in my driveway, I should be able to open a commercial car wash at any time." Let's not forget what this variance was for. This is for rubbish trucks. So, you have heavy trucks from there, 1982. You have towing activity from the time they moved in. This isn't something new to this property, and I just want to have everybody keep that in perspective. They were working on towed vehicles in the garage, they now want to work on new customers unrelated to towing. That's what's being asked. I'm not going to stand here and say there aren't enforcement issues. They shouldn't be doing the repairs they do outside. They're not permitted, and they're not going to be permitted if you, if you grant this variance. There are clearly enforcement issues which have raised the level of frustration of the neighbor, but those are enforcement issues of uses. Those are not whether or not we're doing a total illegal use. We're operating outside the legal operating hours. Every business has enforcement issues. Some people park in the street, some people park on their side yard, those are enforcement issues. We're just asking to clarify what use is permitted. I don't think it's fair to say you can't have the use just because in the past there's been some enforcement issues. That's all my point is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lionel?
Couple of things, all right. First of all, the towing business is towing cars that the police request, and that's one business. And then there's this commercial truck repair business, and we've been seeing pictures of large trucks parked up and down the street, and repairs apparently being done on the street, but also in the lot of your client's business. And there's the pictometry photo showing many large trucks parked outside there. So, these are, and you said earlier, you said earlier that you would allow a stipulation that no trucks be parked along the residential street. How is your client going to maintain the business of repairing trucks with such a small allowed space for repairing these trucks and coincident with also towing cars for the city? That's one question. The second question is, would you please reference in your material the words from the 1982 variance permitting a truck repair business? Because I can't find them in the material that you have supplied.
The answer to your first question is, is, that was the first question I asked the client when they came in, the applicant, not the owner. How are you going to manage this business? Because you're not going to be allowed outside of repair, you're not going to be allowed to have all the trucks, and how do you have the competing? And his answer is, "That's what we have to do, we have to do." I think like any business, it's reasonable to say, they operated since 2013, it probably got busier, no question about it, and all of a sudden, here we are in 2018, and they get told they can't do what they've been doing for five years. But they understand what they have to do. The application is repairs inside only, and that's where they're going to do their repairs. That's, that's the answer to that question. Will it be tight? Sure, it's tight, but there's room for seven trucks inside, there's room on the outside to move vehicles, they probably can't have the volume they've had, and they won't be able to enjoy it. But that's true of any, any business use that pushes the envelope, always trying to expand. Every business tries to squeeze more, more, I call it 10, the 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. That's what everybody tries to do in a business, because you have overhead and you want to make more money, so you ramp up the volume. But someone has to come back and say, "You can't do that." And that's what the city has said, you can't increase. So, there are two issues of enforcement, one is use and one is overuse. And I'm saying, the issue at hand is overuse, not use. An answer to your second question as to where do you find it? If you turn to the variance minutes, it is on the second page of, and I gave my only book, actually, Mike has it, away, but it is on the minutes, which might be, I think, for the reference. Looks like it'll be tab two, behind tab two. It is on the top of the third page, rebuttal in favor, and it's highlighted in yellow. Mr. Billings asked about car repairs, Mr. Dubey said they work on their own cars only, used to work on motorcycles, but it was years ago, and they have since stopped it. Mr. Kuzma asked if they plan to conduct car repairs within the new building, Mr. Dubey said yes. And then the other place is in, under tab three, motion by Mrs. Goodman that the request for a variance be granted with a stipulation that the outside parking be limited to the HB zone, that a fence be erected on the zone line, that all repairs be done inside the garage, that business on Lot 11 be discontinued, and approved site be obtained. So, all repairs be done inside the garage, is the second reference.
I'm seeing that the actual motion was, the request, the variance was to construct a truck storage garage.
Yes, I'm just, you asked where repairs was mentioned, those are the two places, and the second one is in the actual motion to grant, that all repairs be done inside the garage.
That's repairs of the property owner's trucks.
Right, repairs, that's correct. There's never been, there's never been a independent repair activity permitted by the zoning board or requested by the zoning board. That's why we're now at that stage of doing it differently.
Yet that is the business that you say has been ongoing, and you, and your client wants to continue.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney House? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attorney Atkins, you have a rebuttal, if you like. Okay, so Attorney Atkins decides not to come up. So, with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Any thoughts, anybody?
Well, you want to say something?
Mr. Carrier started.
Yeah, you started, okay.
I guess I'd start off by saying, if there wasn't a conflict.
I guess I'd start off by saying, if there wasn't a conflict between abutters, I feel, isn't it great that this business is booming so well? But, you know, clearly, the booming of the business is, is a great problem for the abutter, and that, that's why we're here. And I'm, I, I guess, I, I feel empathy for the abutter. I mean, what catches my attention is, the owner did diligence to see what, if he were to buy this house, what am I looking at next door, what am I going to experience? And what's permitted is, is a commercial business, but I think it's a lot smaller scale than what's operating now. I think whether it's garbage trucks that granted, I don't think anybody wants to live next to, but are stored inside, which is a huge benefit, or the repair of a fleet of tow trucks, which I think are always in need of maintenance and repair, that is a great deal smaller than the photographs of what we see going on there now. And so I, I'm, I certainly don't have any problem with the eight-foot fence requirement. I think all parties would be happy with that, regardless of whether, what happens with variance number one. I say I'm fully in support of variance number two. But I, I, I do feel, you know, like a root situation that this board needs to deal with is look at, you know, both sides of the story. As Attorney Hollis says, there's two sides every story, we have a business story and we have an abutter story. And I, I'm feeling that the scale of the business is certainly beyond what was originally permitted. And I think that what variance number one would result, probably not quite what we're seeing in these pictures happening now. I think there probably would be, you know, less repairs going on in the street with hoods going up like we see here. But nonetheless, the, the noise associated with what's going on between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM with a truck repair business, if variance number two was permitted, is a lot greater than what was originally permitted. And I feel that's not in concert with the abutting house. That's where I'm at, and I'm looking forward to hearing other opinions.
Mr. Shaw?
No, you, go ahead. I'll go next.
Yeah, I, I mean, I actually, I guess, I don't feel that going to the truck repair business as a major use is a minor or modest increase over what was originally permitted. I mean, first of all, it appears that all of the repairs that were discussed were about car repairs. So that was what was originally presented and originally discussed. It was not actually about truck repairs, it was about people repairing their own vehicles. It wasn't about as a car repair business either, although there seems to be some testimony from some of that earliest part of things in 1982, where there was an intentional car repair business. So I think there might be some, some gray, gray area as far as what was, what was said versus what was actually being done. But even what the, what this board appeared to have approved was within the spirit and intent of a partial effort, a modest amount of work being done for car repairs. And I think that in many ways, the board, probably back at that point in time, and what we have to deal with now, is this split zone issue, trying to resolve the fact that you do have kind of very, as much of a transition or whatever you might call it, when you have something like this happening, because you've got 20, 19% of the property that's HB and the other 81% that's RA. Well, so there's going to be almost natural conflict there to some degree. But what, even before any of, actually, any of the, the abutters concerns were raised, I already had very significant concerns about how much more impactful a truck repair, active truck repair business would be as far as a use, than that being as an ancillary or very secondary or minor use, when the intent, I believe, had been more about storage of vehicles on the property, even an original desire to keep those vehicles stored only in the HB zone part of the property, which that, I think we understand some of that history, and there was, you know, a discovery that came about that wasn't even quite maybe what everybody had originally understood. But I, I just see that the, even if the business itself hadn't expanded maybe in considerable activity, I think the expansion of this effort and activity, I just don't think it's, it's appropriate to further extend what I think is ultimately really the, the non-conforming part of the use or the part that's, that's already kind of pushing what should, I think, be allowed for this kind of usage. So I think what was already approved was already fairly significant, and I don't really see expanding that any further as a, as a benefit to the local neighborhood. And it's clearly, I think, very impactful for the direct abutter.
Mr. Lionel?
As far as I can tell, reading the material here, the original use variance was to construct a, a building to store the then-owner's trucks for, and perhaps do repairs on those trucks inside the garage. There's nothing here about a general, you know, bring your truck, your commercial truck here and we'll, we'll fix it for you business. Yet that's the business that has started up in later years with a new owner and accelerated since 2013. And we're being asked to condone that continuing even scaled back down. I'm not in favor of that.
Thank you. Ms. McCain?
Well, this is difficult. When everything happened in 1982, and I keep going back to the, under the tab three.
Ms. McCain, your mic is off.
There you go.
I'm sorry. I go back to 1982, and the actual motion that granted some of this activity, it doesn't state categorically that it is to be an auto repair or a truck repair. All it says is that all repairs be done inside the garage. Assumptions can be made and suppositions can be made as to what that references, but the actual written words do not state that. So just looking at that alone, it makes it difficult to assume what people meant, because what they meant was all repairs to be done inside the garage. They were asked about repairs, they responded, yes, there will be repairs. However, the scale and scope of the business has increased monumentally since 1982, and it has a huge impact on the quality of life of the neighborhood. So it's juxtaposed almost here for me, saying, okay, this is what the words say, this is what the intent may have been, and this is what today's actuality is. In today's world, would I want to have all of that going on next to my couple-month-old and, and five-year-old child? Absolutely not. It, it doesn't make sense, but the towing business has 24/7. Those lights and that noise is going to happen regardless of truck repair or no truck repair. So quite frankly, I'm in a quandary, I don't know which way to go on this one.
Ms. Vitale?
I have a couple of questions. I see under tab six, did, did the line change? It says the zone line is in a different location. What was, how's, I'm trying to understand that. Based on information prior to the survey, all of the parking was in the business zone. However, now that the zone line is in a different location, that's no longer true. Did something change in there? At that time, or that, you know, when they first came in to the time that they came back? And also, when they built this building, and they, because they built the building, they had to have parking. What, Mr. Falk, what was the requirement for parking at that time? And I, and I see under tab five, the use variance to allow commercial parking in an RA zone. What, what is commercial parking? It is, is it larger spaces than what we think of as parking? Does that mean they have to have six spaces? Like we'd see if we went to the grocery store, what size is that parking? And is that still holding true currently for the number of spaces? And if they're talking about the police towing in cars, are they putting them in those five, six spaces that I see on, on the picture under tab eight? Is that where the parking is supposed to take place, it's outside parking? If all the trucks are supposed to be located within the building?
That's where they would park, I mean, they were designated striped spaces, that's where they should be parking? You're not supposed to park?
All around the building.
Around everywhere, they're supposed to be in striped spaces. As far as what commercial parking is, I mean, we don't really have a designation of what commercial parking is versus industrial or residential parking, unless they just meant commercial. I, I can't, this was a 35 or so year ago application. I don't know what they really meant by commercial parking, unless they just meant the commercial trucks, because they had a commercial truck business with the rubbish and the demo business. But I'm guessing that just meant truck parking.
And, and can we tell from the information if that parking that is allowed is how many spaces that was?
Well, at the time, they didn't have a, they didn't apply for a variance for parking, so I'm assuming that at the time the site plan was approved, that it met the parking ordinance. I mean, the site plan here in tab, looks like eight. Really doesn't get into a lot of detail about the parking, but I don't see any variance for the parking. So I'm assuming it met the code at the time. I don't, I don't know what the parking was at that time, that was numerous code versions ago.
Because what I see is about five spaces in that, in that diagram that is right there. And if that was like towing, and you left five vehicles there at any given time, and from what I see, that all trucks are supposed to be parked inside, you wouldn't see, you should not see anything else. And according to what we're reading, that all repairs are supposed to be inside.
Most likely parking for a use like that, back then, I'm guessing was about 1,000 to 1,500 probably, maybe 1,000 to 1,000 generously, but it looked like that. That size building, along with the number of parking spaces, probably met the ordinance at that time.
And another question, for, for when the police have things towed and locations in town, if that property is full, would they not tow it to a different location if there's no room left at a property? Do you know what usually happens in that case?
I don't know. I'm sure, I think, from my knowledge, I've never had a car towed, like I would. I think they have contracts or agreements with certain areas where they can drop cars off. I think they can drop them off like at repair garages. And there may be other vacant lots where they have agreements to drop off cars, but I really don't know.
And one last question, because I, I think everybody sees that we've seen the pictures that is, that is parking out on the street. When, when businesses are, are given, you know, their permission to have business, is the assumption is, and the rule is, that all business stuff is done on the lot and not parked up and down the street? Or is that, I know, like, for example, when we approved a restaurant downtown, there was extensive discussion on where the available parking is for customers. Is that hold true, where is the available parking for people that are coming there for business? In this case, it's not like an eatery or something like that, but they're?
The downtown zone doesn't require any parking, so it's really up to the establishment and customers and/or clients to park wherever they can find a spot, whether it's in one of the parking garages or on street parking with a meter. Other properties that are zoned, you know, GB or HB or some of the industrial zones, you know, there's an expectation that you're going to park on your property and not out on the street. Sometimes, sometimes people do park on the street temporarily. You know, if all the spaces in a parking lot are taken, you might park out in the street temporarily. But there is an expectation that the, the parking spaces that are required and provided on the site will meet your needs, and that's where you're, that's where you're supposed to be parking.
That, that would be my assumption, if I was going to be looking at this business, is that that business is operating under the amount of space on that property to meet their, their business needs. In the, in the past, when I ever see businesses and they've grown to the point, and this is a nice location for the towing part, but if they've grown to the point that they're overusing the property's needs, which is a great thing, many times they look for a new property that they can expand their business on. But that's, that's the way I, I would look at it. But I, I, I think the use of this property is, has surpassed the size of the property that it's located on.
I, I, kind of in the same vein as what you've talked about, Mr. Shaw, you know, just from, from the, from the get-go, so I'm having a hard time to even get there. But let's say we just leap forward. Again, I mean, I think it's great that, that the business has grown to a point where they've got all this business. I just, and I understand what the applicant's looking for, and, and I, I don't wish them anything but good luck in, in, in growing their business. But I think that this particular location, notwithstanding neighbors, because again, towing is allowed, and you're going to have those activities as we talked about. But as I look at the location, I, I guess I just don't see how this works anymore. And how, you know, I, I know that it would have to be self-regulated and, and those ideas, but I, I think that, again, seems like it's just a lot going on. It's the impact on that piece of property is, is, is pretty, 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 pretty big. Mr. Curry, you want to jump in, or?
No, I'll just finish off, I had one other thing to add when you were all done.
So I, I, I'm having a hard time to see how, to, again, be encouraging to the business, the growth of that business, how, how would I even formulate? I, I know that the applicant has offered some stipulations, okay? But in the end, I, I don't know how you can stop anybody from coming to that area and wanting to do business there, and how that, you know, in the good times, in, in the good times- times, when, when business is there, how, how that can be regulated to where it's reasonable for the property. And, you know, this is not on the table, but again, I, I don't know, you know, again, we talked about, you know, what's going on around the building. You know, certainly their property, however they want it to look, but at what point does the stuff just start pushing? You know, does it, does, does it become more of a problem? So if we're trying to remove the problem from the street and they're saying they're going to move the problem to the tree, the street, I don't know now if it just becomes more of an issue with the property itself and now it's going to be so full that it's going to be pushing out, you know? So again, what, what is that impact? And, and I know that currently, you know, the previous abutters are, are, are related to the, to the owners of this property, but again, um, there's a lot more going on there as I feel. But again, that's my, you know, what I, what I see right now. So I'm having a hard time with, with, with this, um, moving to the primary operation of a, of a repair facility. I'm, I'm, if, if it was, again, I, I think it's fitting that if it's de-antoeing and again, um, they need to, to work on their own vehicles as, as, because that facility can handle large trucks and, um, they use large wreckers or less trucks. I, I think that's completely reasonable. And, you know, having a door open, I think, I think as, if I bought that house, I knew there was some type of repair as a minor business that goes on there, I would expect some of that. Even if, um, that were to be more, you know, let's say the fleet's larger and there is eight vehicles in there at a time that it can handle and people are working on them constantly, that would just be the nature of that as the minor business because I'm maintaining my own fleet, right? Not customer vehicles because now that's other vehicles that have to be there. So with that, Mr. Curry.
Well, I just wanted to clarify a little that, e, even though you were speaking to it quite well, that the truck repair business, I think, is a big step up over the twenty-four seven towing business. And like when we were hearing earlier about the flashing lights of the towing business, it would be my sense is why would a towing business want to have its lights on? The flashing yellow lights, which are very bright, which they need to be, right? We always hear about these accidents and the move over law, people not paying attention to it, but when you're pull a car or a truck on your own property, why would, at night, why would you, with the butters, you know, people sleeping next door, why would you want to keep your emergency lights on? I would think you'd just be pulling in and setting it down and moving on. So while maybe that happens or has been happening, uh, I don't know. I think that, that the truck repair business is a big step up from the twenty-four seven permitted towing business. And I just wanted to have that out there, that, yeah, I think it's a big step up if this board were to approve that, that truck repair business is a primary, you know, approved business over what it is now. I mean, I, I just, I mean, we call, kind of gone around the discussion. I, I, I don't think we've spoken too much about the eight-foot fence. It is part of this application. I, I think we might all be in favor of that eight-foot fence request. If, if so, maybe I'd make a motion on that one.
In response to Mr. Courier, I know when, um, you're plowing or you are towing, you have to have certain lights that have to be on to alert anybody, even when, say you're plowing, you're plowing a driveway in a residential area and it could be your driveway next to your neighbor. The light has to be on to allow people to, um, know what you're doing and that, I think, would, you'd have to check the actual RSAs or the laws that govern that. But I know when my husband toes or my husband plows, he needs to have those lights going to alert any other person or vehicle to the fact that there's something going on here that is not in typical. So the lights would be going if the twenty-four seven, the lights stay with the towing. But I agree, flip-flopping the business, phew, that's a lot.
Ms. Valano.
I, I, I don't think the business is flip-flopping. There is a business that's being run that was never granted before. And, and that's what I read in the injunction. That's what I read in the minutes of the nineteen eighty-two meetings. And I want, I, I know that it's been characterized as a minor versus major, but I don't, I think that's obscuring what's really happening. That's my interpretation.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Curry, well, as well, um, I think at least we have consensus on one maybe, um, variance and then we'll try to figure out if there was, be a motion on the other one or do, um, however we should handle that.
But I think there's going to be two different motions for the two variants.
Right, right.
So let me just move things along. I'm going to make a motion on behalf of the owner, CPC Investments. This is variance number two, uh, which is a, a request to exceed maximum fence height, six feet allowed, eight feet proposed. I'm going to make a motion to approve this variance. I think the board, uh, agrees in unanimity here that, uh, unanimously that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which may or may not be approved before us tonight, but I think the board feels that regardless of what level of activity the commercial business remains at, the eight-foot fence would be beneficial to both parties involved. And therefore, I think the board finds that the eight-foot fence is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance and that the, that this, uh, proposed eight-foot fence would not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. In fact, I think we might, I think the board agrees it would probably enhance it to have more, uh, shielding from the commercial business between that and the residential. And I think the eight-foot fence would, uh, the board finds is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice to both the butters would be served. So I make a motion to approve the eight-foot fence.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing, that passes.
Let me take a shot at.
Sure.
Variance number one. Uh, I'm going to make a motion on variance number one. Again, I'll read it into the record, uh, to allow vehicle towing business and vehicle repairs within the existing building with commercial parking of, with parking of commercial trucks outside the building. I make a motion to deny that request. Uh, I think the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, or I think this board finds that it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that this split zone parcel, to have that level of commercial business, uh, would adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels and would not be contrary, and is contrary to the public interest. That substantial justice, uh, is, uh, for, for many years, this land has been used for a commercial business, which was, uh, uh, stipulated by this board in nineteen eighty-two, and that has been, uh, that level of business activity, I think, has shown to be sufficient and, uh, but with this recent growth of oper, uh, growth of business, uh, and what's being asked for now is, I think the board finds is, is, uh, too large for the, particularly with the surrounding, uh, residential area. So I make a motion to deny, uh, variance number one.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor to deny motion of one? That's five to nothing. That's unanimous. Attorney Hollis, you heard our decision. So motion one has been denied and motion two has been accepted.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'll close case number three and open case number four. I'll read case number four into the record. Uh, case number four is nineteen eighty-seven Tamposi Limited Partnership, address is fifty-seven Northeastern Boulevard. The description is nineteen eighty-seven Tamposi Limited Partnership, owner fifty-seven Northeastern Boulevard. Sheet one forty, lot sixty-eight, requesting use variance and land use code, section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number thirty-three, to allow use of approximately twenty-five percent of a proposed office building for a bank with a drive-through facility. It's in the PI zoning district. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, my name is Morgan Hollis, uh, Gottesman and Hollis in Nashua, and, uh, thank you for your patience on the last one. I hope this one is a little smoother or easier. I have my assistant here, Jim Petropolis of Hayner Swanson, uh, who's here because he is the, uh, project engineer on the potential project should a variance be granted. I'm representing the owner of the property, nineteen eighty-seven Tamposi Limited Partnership. Property is located at fifty-seven Northeastern Boulevard, lot sixty-eight, map one forty. It's two point one eight acres. Uh, it's, uh, a piece of property which has a foundation and some minor improvements on it. Foundation is fourteen thousand square feet and was built in two thousand and three. The zoning on this property is PI Park Industrial. In two thousand and three, the then zoning ordinance, uh, provided that in Park Industrial, you were allowed office buildings as long as they were larger than ten thousand square feet. Currently, the land use code does not allow office buildings in the Park Industrial Zone. So there's been a major change of what's permitted and what's not. Back in those days, Park Industrial was office building primarily. If you drive up and down Northeastern Boulevard, you see what's there. Today, Park Industrial is, has a bigger focus on industrial manufacturing uses. So the Park Industrial, the fact that they put a foundation in and made the improvements grandfathered the use as an office building. That's the good news. The bad news is it's a fourteen thousand square foot, two-story office building and a fairly large Park Industrial area, not a lot of demand for, for office parks, uh, for office buildings that are non-conforming, uh, because you can't expand them easily. So it has sat there and has not been built. Now we have, comes along an opportunity, which is a bank would like to occupy half of the first floor or seven thousand square feet approximately. That's twenty-five percent of the overall building. Under the land use code, an office is permitted only as part of a site plan in which twenty fi, seventy-five percent of the gross floor area is reserved for use is listed in industrial and, and manufacturing. So that means you can have an office building as part of a larger facility. Also under the land use code, a bank with a drive-through, which is being requested, is permitted only as part of a site plan in which seventy-five percent of the gross floor area is, is reserved for use is listed in industrial manufacturing. So in this building, if we were going to have the other seventy-five percent be in manufacturing, um, this would probably be permitted by conditional use, but it's not. And Carter has ruled we need a variance if you want to put a bank in a portion of a building or as a standalone for that matter. So because of that, we are here this evening. We think we meet all five criteria. I have the two plans here, which show the space. This is the identification of the layout of, um, what was approved for a site plan back, uh, in two thousand and three, and this is the building, seven thousand square feet. This plan has been modified a little bit to show what it would be like when you put the, uh, when you go to the planning board to get approval. The drive-through will be on the back side, not on Northeastern Boulevard, and then they'll exit, uh, on the far side or the, what I would call the northwest corner of the property. They have two empty points, both at the most westerly and the most easterly extreme. It backs up to a fairly large, uh, and multi-use building, which is under the same ownership that is nineteen eighty-seven Tamposi Limited Partnership, and there's a lot of parking in between. And I believe that shows right on this plan, which may be hard for you to see, but it's a, uh, aerial plan of it. The existing commercial, uh, commercial is the best way to use it, but it's Park Industrial Zone property. Again, Park Industrial Zone property, Park Industrial Zone and used property. You have the FAA center over here and you have our site, which is highlighted in yellow with the foundation and parking area improvements shown. Across Northeastern Boulevard is an office park with office condominiums, and then of course to the south, directly to the south, is residential area of Surrey Lane, Greenwood, Stafford Road, Glen, Glen Drive. So that is the neighborhood that we're in. The first criteria is the proposed use as, uh, twenty-five percent of a office building for a bank would not be contrary to the public interest. Under the current zoning, as I said, a bank would be permitted if the other seventy-five percent were manufacturing and industrial, but it's not proposed to be, it's proposed to be an office. But that, that note in the zoning ordinance indicates the interest of the city and the public interest. That is, the public feels it's okay to have a bank occupy twenty-five percent of a building. They don't want it to be the whole building. They want it to be twenty-five percent and they want it to be in a building that's also compatible in the zone. Well, we have a grandfathered use, so I would consider that compatible in the zone. So I think it is in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance in that we're within the twenty-five percent, and I also think it's not contrary to the public interest in that having a bank in this area was understood to be a potential use, a potential permitted use all along. It will not alter, alter the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood has a, a lot of uses even though it's PI, and that's because of this change in the description of what's allowed, uh, after two thousand and three. It will not alter the character because the character is industrial, commercial, personal services, the FAA center, retail, and even on Northeastern Boulevard at either end, there are two standalone banks, believe it or not. So there are banks in the area, there's offices in the area, there are residential in the area, and we're proposing a bank, which will not alter that character. Will not threaten health, safety or welfare. There's water, sewer, road capacity. The drive-in will be on the bank and the backside. There's a lot of stacking availability on our site because it is a horizontal site parallel to Northeastern Boulevard. So, uh, there won't be any threat to safety, health or welfare. It's in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, as I said, for the same reasons you argue are not contrary to public interest. Number three, uh, substantial justice, uh, will be done. There's a, um, this is a balancing act. Is there any harm to the public if you grant this? Is there any harm to the applicant if you don't grant it? And what are those two harms and how do they balance out? I would start with, is there any harm to the public if you grant this? You're allowing what, as I say, the ordinance, uh, anticipated could happen, twenty-five percent of one of the buildings in a Park Industrial might be a bank. And so they anticipated a bank as a compatible use and therefore there's no harm. The immediate abutter is my client. They obviously have deemed that there's no harm. Uh, the opposite of butters are all people who might reasonably use a bank, as a matter of fact. It's not going to stand out as a separate building. When you look at the office building, you'll look what an office building looks like. And in the back will be the drive-through facility here with the teller window. So you won't even notice the drive-through facility from the roadway. Not adversely affect values of other properties. I think that's fairly self-explanatory and, um, uh, I think the, the whole issue of, um, value is what do you, what do people think is going to affect them? You heard a lot of testimony in the last case. They live next door, they're very sensitive. We don't happen to have any butters here. My client's the immediate abutter, nobody is opposed to a bank going in there. I, I don't think, I think that's clear evidence it won't affect, adversely affect values of the neighborhood. I, I did engage an appraiser, um, to make a report, but, uh, all I can do is say, I apologize, I left it on my office desk because I had these two cases going on. But, uh, the report, uh, was to me and it said that there would be no adverse effect on, uh, values of abutting properties. But I think, as I say, the uses speak for itself. The fact that nobody opposes it, uh, generally is good testimony in and of itself. And the final point is hardship. Is the property unique? Well, it's hard to make out a case for totally unique, but I would say it's unique in that if you look at the overall, uh, this aerial, and I actually have a larger aerial that I'm going to pass out, you get a sense of scale for, uh, and the building's highlighted in pink, a sense of scale for the lots. It is one of the smaller lots, it's not the smallest, it's actually next to the smallest lot. Next to the smallest lot, which is right here. But it is small in comparison with other industrial uses. This is large, 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 large. So, um, and I think what's really unique about it is that it was created under the old ordinance. is that it was created under the old ordinance. You have an office building, which back in those days, a 14,000-square-foot, I mean, a 20, 28,000-square-foot office building in total, two stories. Not an unusual size in 2003. It's a little bit problematic today, and that's why it's empty. So I think that helps with the uniqueness of it, that the ordinance has changed, and you have a use which is grandfathered, limiting what can go on there. Because of that uniqueness, is there a fair and substantial relationship when you enforce the ordinance against this property, that is prohibit bank? I don't think it's fair. I don't think there's a substantial relationship to the intent and purpose of the ordinance here. You want to keep industrial uses in an industrial zone. As I pointed out, the drafters of the current land use code anticipated that banks should be a component, and it ought to fit within the confines of the existing uses, not stand out on its own. So we think we're doing that, and if you prohibited it, there's no real fair and substantial relationship to that purpose. So the final decision is, given all of that uniqueness, is it a reasonable use for the site? And we would argue that you're not going to even notice it. It's a bank, it's very reasonable use. That's it. Mr. Petropolis is here. If you have questions about the layout of the site, or anything else that you might want to ask.
Any questions? Mr. Carrier.
Well, I just had one, I think, correction to your testimony. You had mentioned about two banks in the area, one at either side. I think you forgot the third bank in between Santander, so there's three on.
You're right. Yeah, I was thinking of the two ends.
No, technically.
The Lowell is?
It's no, it's Harris Road until you get to the McDonald's. So they really are.
All right.
Two to three. There are two to three in the area. Thank you.
I know, I was thinking the same thing.
I think either interpretation, though, you could argue, supports the spirit and intent.
Any other questions, Mr. Shaw?
I think this is probably for Mr. Petropolis, but it appears, and I kind of was, kind of wondering about this, but the, the, what is it, the dedicated entrance and exit for this, especially at least the bank part of the activity. But it's, it appears that the traffic flow in and out of the adjoining parking lot that ultimately connects to Best Fitness and Billiards and all is intended to not allow that traffic to funnel in towards where the drive-through lane is. And I'm assuming that's intentional and to prevent maybe a flow of traffic coming out of there and going through the, through the bank and keeping it to exit through the existing primary driveway.
So for the record, my name is Jim Petropolis, civil engineer with Hayner Swanson. And Mr. Shaw, that's correct. What we tried to do with the bank is give it a little bit of its own identity. As Morgan said, we're going to be on the first floor of a two-story, flat-roofed building, so it's really going to look like an office building, but we're proposing a bank. Now, banking has changed dramatically with sending in checks by email and, and online banking and things. And they're not as active in the drive-through manner as they currently were. But we did want to give a new entrance so that this half of the building had its own identity when compared to other uses along Northeastern Boulevard. The notion is this would be two-way and that the circulation pattern would be here and such in a, in a clockwise manner, is to give that driver's side up against the building. Your attention, Mr. Shaw, is here. Where we're taking away one little connection to the back site. And you're correct. We have full access over here, so these two sites will talk together. And the reason we did that is competition for parking. The back building has several really intense users. Best Fitness is a very business, a very busy place. And Boston Billiards is a very busy place. And of course, they have gaming now with poker. And so at times, and of course, our company is in this neighborhood, and we love Northeastern Boulevard, so I'm very familiar with it. But at times, this parking dominates that whole field. And even in the past 15 years in which this foundation has been built and the parking has been built, we see cars parked all along on the side of that site. So it was really to provide a little bit more identity for the bank and a little bit of separation for parking. Would we do that if we were on Daniel Webster Highway? Probably not, because you want to interact those two sites. Here, Northeastern Boulevard is a good collector road, but it doesn't peak like those, those other roads. So if somebody works out at Best Fitness and wants to go to the bank and comes back through the main entrance and works through, I don't see that as being fatal. So we're trying to juggle a bunch of different movements here, but I think this is probably the best way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When was that foundation poured and built? Because I thought it was longer ago than 15 years. Seems like it's been there.
The building permit was issued in 2003.
Feels like it's been there way longer.
Yeah, remember when that went in?
Thank you.
Seeing there's nobody else in the audience to either speak in favor or in opposition, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I'm glad to see that something's actually going to start happening with this piece of property. It was looking to a point where I thought maybe eventually the foundation would just kind of disintegrate and fall away, but. And I have noticed what Mr. Petropolis did say. I have seen in last year, parking right, almost right to the road. I was like, kind of amazed at that, but, which is good, which means, you know, it's good for Northeastern Boulevard. So I have every confidence that this will blend in. I think that it's a good use. It's not the most intensive use on, it's going to be on that lot. And again, I think that the drive-through portion of it, again, I don't think that's going to be a high-impact issue for that, for that site. And I, I don't think we have to, I don't see anything that I would want to stipulate. I think this is just kind of a straightforward, plenty of room to collect cars. And I think that at the planning board stage, they can come up with any of the details that they would see in their purview. But I don't think there's anything that we need to do that would help them in one way or another to make this easier for them. I think this is a pretty, I think, very, for our drive-through, I think this is a very light, low-impact-type part of the project type thing. So, so I'm in full favor of this application. Mr. Shaw?
I am too. I mean, my, my concern is really more about long-term, quite frankly, that if office space is not that easy to fill, and they're going to have 21,000 square feet of office space, and if they struggle to fill it, are we potentially going to have something coming back for some, some further, you know, conversion to commercial use? And that, that can be dealt with at the time. I just, I'm happy to see something finally get developed here. I think this seems like a reasonable use and a good balance. It's more just hoping that they are able to make a successful go of it and not, not necessarily, you know, have struggles with the actual use of the office space as, as it's intended.
Yeah, just a comment of that. That was one of the things I was thinking about. And I think we've seen some different requests for that area. And, you know, some of that, I don't, what, it's not transitional. It's like a hospital setting or a mental, you know, the building, before that, down the street, they.
The rehab sanctuary.
Rehab, right.
What used to be Greenbrier.
Harbor Homes, right. And, and so, you know, there was some thought about that, but, but as I have been driving, you know, I live on the other side of the highway, but I use that road. I don't, I don't, it really hasn't, to me, as I drive by, doesn't seem to be an issue there. And I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen. I'm just saying I think that some things have worked out well there. But I did have the same concern as yours, but I think nothing that would prevent me from voting anything different, so, sorry about that. Any, anything, any other comments?
I'd just say I'm in concurrence with Mr. Hollis's testimony, and I'm in favor of it. I think the application stands on its own merit.
Anybody else?
I have no issues with this application.
I have no issues either.
Ms. Vitale?
Nope, I think it is well-presented, and I would be in favor.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Carrier?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of 1987 Tamponi, Tamposi Limited Partnership. The address is 57 Northeastern Boulevard. And again, the request is a use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, paragraph or statement number 33. And that is to allow use of approximately 25% of a proposed office building for a bank with a drive-through facility. I believe this board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is stated as, is a, well, 25% is proposed to be occupied by a bank with a drive-through facility. I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's other banks within this P.I. district. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. I think the board could, is be swayed that it would increase the property values of surrounding parcels, that this long, 15-year undeveloped parcel with a foundation, empty foundation on it is going to be developed into an office building that hopefully would be populated once it's built. I guess it's the build it and they will come philosophy, huh? I think the board finds it's not contrary to the public interest and substantial justice is served, so I make a motion to approve as presented before us tonight.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? All in favor? That's five to nothing. Thank you. Motion passes? That'll close case number four. We have some meeting minutes, correct? Cover 23rd? Does anybody, has anybody?
I took a look through it, I didn't see any corrections necessary.
Hey, Kathy.
Okay.
Congrats for your service, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Anybody else see anything? Mr. Carrier didn't see any, any issues?
Actually, maybe I, I actually did, very end. It says, Mr. Carrier called the meeting closed, but I'm assuming you really should say, Mr. Bush.
Well, I think I made a motion to close the meeting, and it was seconded. And yeah, the way it's worded is if maybe I was in the pilot house.
It was probably from you previously chairing him. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I took it as, I made the motion, but you were chairing.
Usually, we don't, I think most time, we don't technically do an official vote on those, so. Usually, the chair is just calling it closed, that's why. It's minor, but I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly if something worked differently, that's all.
Anything else?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 2018, as proposed.
Second.
Okay, so motion on table approved, and it was seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any other discussion? All in favor? That's five to nothing. Okay, and there's no other meeting minutes in that package. Regional impact? Anybody see anything? Their agenda was on our desk, we're next.
There will also be the Dunkin' Donuts case will be the first case, because that was held over from October 23rd meeting. So that'll be the first one, and then these three.
I didn't see any, did anybody see anything?
No.
Okay, so, so there's no regional impact?
And then there was the dates.
It's dates, no.
Dates, I believe we made the correction. It was in May, they were the, we had them as the 7th and 21st. We changed them to the 2nd and 4th. So they all should be the 2nd and 4th now.
Yeah, that was the only issue we talked about two weeks ago. So do we need to vote on that, or just we presented it?
It's nice to have a vote. I mean, it's not really a requirement, but I think there are other people in City Hall that like to see that the board made an official motion for it, because they can be put in different websites and things, so.
Before I make a, I'm happy to make a motion to approve that. Just as a, as a reminder, if there's an election that comes up, like I'm just, you know, if there's, say, for one for Mr. McCarthy that happens to fall on a Tuesday of our meeting, we would be having that meeting on Wednesday instead, but that's not in front of us at this time.
Yeah, per the bylaws, right.
Just such what's in our bylaws. So if we want a motion, I make a motion to approve the 2019 meeting and deadline dates as proposed this evening.
Okay, motions on the floor to approve, and seconded by Mr. Shaw?
One sec, I want to catch up to them, who made it and what the motion is, because there's nothing here, I had to create it.
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate, the motion was for the 2019 meeting and deadline dates for the ZVA.
So motions to adopt those as official dates for next year, 2019?
Mr. Carrier made the motion, and I seconded.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? That's five to nothing. Okay, so that passes.
I have one other item. It was brought to my attention that we should probably have a training session, like, you know, this board and the planning board, like, once a year, every two years or so. We've had, in the past, Attorney Canal, we've had Attorney Bolton come in. We're thinking about having someone from the Municipal Association in Concord. They've done it as well. Have them come in and have a, the typical hour, hour-and-a-half-long training session. So I just wanted to see what kind of availability. We've usually had them on a in-between meeting date, like the 3rd or the first Tuesday of a month. Because we normally meet on the 2nd and 4th. So I know it's getting closer to holiday time and busy times, so I don't know if it's something that maybe the board would want us to try to consider, like, after the first of the year. There's really not that many more weeks left to go in this year, and it's going to get, it's going to get too busy with people's schedules and holidays. So maybe it's something that we'll try to get something scheduled, like in January or February, if that's okay.
Just an idea, could, had you thought, or throw out, could we do it jointly with the planning board? To maybe meet the planning board members and the relationship?
I can ask.
Just right, because a lot of times, there's discussion as to our role versus them, is that the spring training sessions, you know, there's distinctions or discussions on the distinctions, because sometimes the boundaries are a bit blurred.
I can bring it up.
Not managed.
It'll be up to me.
I think that would be interesting, you know, and kind of on your half, maybe the city could kill two birds with one stone and have two boards trained in one swoop.
I'll, I'll bring it up and see if it's something that they want to do. It won't be really up to me. But I'll, I'll bring it up and. I think we did that once in the past, a long time ago. I think we had one joint training schedule, like, from what I remember. A while ago, though.
I won't be here the week of February. So, other than that week, anywhere in January, February is fine with me.
We'll, we'll set something up for after, after the first, then.
Okay, before, before we, we end tonight, I think I want to recognize Ms. Vitale, and I think you want to say a few words?
Yes, I was just going to say, it's been a pleasure serving with all of you. Rob and, and I go back on the, on the Board of Aldermen, and Jack, they're back to Conservation Commission. So it's, it's been very interesting, and everybody's taught me quite a bit. And it's, I'll miss you.
We'll miss your input on the board.
And as I told you already, you just need to find the ZVA down in North Carolina.
That's right. And I, I really hope that, you know, you get a new member soon and that a couple other people come forward, so you have, you have plenty of alternates here to, you know, to sit on the board when we have travelers. So, but thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of not only me, but our staff and our department, it has been a pleasure having you serve on the board. And we've, we've appreciated all your knowledge and your, your coming to meetings regularly and doing your homework, and it's greatly appreciated by us.
Thank you.
Would you like to make?
Safe travels.
Yes.
Final motion?
I, 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 you're a liberty to make a motion, the final motion. I, I, I would, I would be delighted to make a motion, the final motion.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor?
Ten o'clock.
Five. Adjourned to 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thanks.